Thank you. Good evening here, everyone. It's a regular meeting in the City Council of Satellite Beach, November 6th, 2019, approximately 7:00 PM. Please join Councilwoman Gibson in a moment of silence and a pledge.
Please rise for a moment of silence. And for the pledge?
(inaudible) ...of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item 3, which is citizens' comments. So let me explain the procedure. This is for non-agenda items. So if you're here for an agenda item, being at 27 acres, this is not the time to speak about that, okay? These are non-agenda items, okay? The way it works is citizens of Satellite Beach will get the first opportunity to speak. You must live in the city limits of Satellite Beach. That's what we consider citizens. After that, anyone else may approach the mic in an orderly way. You have five minutes in this portion of the meeting. So at this time, I'll open it up to citizens' comments on non-agenda items. So for citizens. Please speak your name and address tonight. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. My name is Ronaldo J. Jergudas. I don't think we've done addresses in the past. Is that a requirement now?
Tonight, we're doing it so we know where individuals are. Thank you.
Well, I have a problem with that in regards to maybe somebody on the Internet. Cybersecurity may be an issue for me.
Yes, because that's how we're proceeding tonight unless I hear otherwise from council. But if not, please state your address.
So if I can't speak tonight, then I have, if I need to provide my address...
May I leave my seat in the city, so maybe let her proceed?
Okay. Thank you. Listen, your time started.
All right. All right. Here's what I'm going to say. And I commend the council of bringing on the, based on one council member here in regards to the children coming up and creating a council and learning about everything. I commend you about that. What I'm concerned about is this right now. Number one, this is a live tube right now, and I guess I'm the first speaker here. So we're live on Wednesday night. And what I want to say is this. Please, every council member, everyone speaking into the microphones, please make a concerted effort, and maybe everything has changed here, to ensure that you speak directly in the microphones so everything can be heard. That's the biggest thing I ask, Mr. Mayor, is that everyone speak here so that we can get the board meetings, we can get everything out here the right way. Because it's very difficult sometimes to hear people. And I understand situations like that where people get upset. And it's not upsetting. It's just speak clearly in the microphone, everyone. Everyone. And if somebody can't hear somebody, let's go there. And then I also want to commend what had happened on Park Avenue in regards to citizens meeting with the city manager. That's a good thing. And there needs to be more direction there to address the issues that we need to do. And I know we have a full audience here. It's great to see a lot of people here for the first time in a long time. And I know I'm not supposed to comment on this, Mr. Mayor, and I directed at you, but again, I emphasize, let's speak into the microphones. And let's address citizens. Let's address citizens. What is my time limit right now?
I'm sorry. I don't know where you're at. My two minutes left.
The background is speaking, move on. And the background interrupted my train of thought. And I hear laughter. This is not the way it is done here. I don't care what prerogative you have, what agenda you have. It is wrong and despicable of what is being done in the background here. Now, if I put myself forward and do the same thing that is done behind me, then I will stand there. And if I'm ejected from a meeting of discussing things in front of this group, then I'm appalled at the behavior here. And if I am being set up to do this, and there are setups here, then I do not want, this is despicable and despisable. Are my two minutes up? Then I will stand here in silence for 50 seconds to ensure that people understand that this is serious business and we could do the right things for the community. And when my time is up, please advise me. And I had more to say here, but distractions are disgusting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alan?
Alan Dillon, 670 Kenwood Court, Satellite Beach. I have approached the subject that I'm talking about now, and it has regards to drainage into the Grand Canal. Right now, we are starting a project to drain or to dredge the whole canal and all the finger canals. Now, I approached this over 20 years ago about the drains in each of the streets everywhere the trunk lines are going into that canal. Right now, we are putting, putting the canal or the court, the horse before the court, the horse before the cart. Thank you. At any rate, if we're going to dredge the canal, the Grand Canal and all the finger canals, but we still have all the garbage going into the canals, we're not accomplishing anything. Now, right now, my kids, my grandkids, my great-grandkids are going to have to deal with this problem again. Now, here's a picture. I took them before we came over here this evening. It's showing all the grass into going through the drains. It needs to be taken care of. I don't want any more talk about it. I want it done. 20 years of being, over 20 years at 670 Kenwood Court, and I've addressed this thing several times. It was to the council initially with Mayor Schechter. And Mayor, you were on the council at that time. Now, we need to get on the stick here and do something before the canals are all dredged and we're still dumping the same stuff in there as causes it to have to dredge now. So I'm leaving it upon you to start doing something. And I'm hoping that I can actually help you do something within the county. This is not just Satellite Beach. This is Indian Harbor Beach, Satellite Beach, Bovard County. It has everything to do with the whole Grand Canal scheme down here. So I'm going to rest my case here and let this meeting continue on. But I would like for you all to take this thing seriously this time because I don't want to come back again. Thank you.
Now, thank you. I know you and I have talked. I appreciate it. Thank you. Podium's still open for non-agenda items.
Diane Douglas, Satellite Beach resident. I'd rather not say my address, if that's okay. What I, since we have a bigger audience, I'm going to talk about the same stuff I always talk about. Please leave the cocaine rock on the beach. It's illegal to take the cocaine rock off the beach. Scented laundry detergents and dryer sheets have volatile organic compounds in them which are carcinogens. I know people are worried about old carcinogens. Let's worry about the carcinogens we're putting in the water now. If we can stop doing that, that would be great. So no more taking cocaine rock off the beach. Let's exploit the beach as a natural wonder of 120,000-year-old. You can sit among the 120,000-year-old rocks and touch them and put them back, but you don't need to take them home. Let's have the Cocaine Rock Cafe. Let's exploit it like all the other tourist places do without exploiting the natural resources. Let's just exploit the goodness. All right. And then, yeah, so I think that's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you, Diane. Appreciate it. Citizens' comments or any further citizen?
Dale Abrams, a CRA resident. Good evening, council. Good evening, YouTube videos. I know we're live streamed. Welcome. I am so excited about this crowd tonight. I've been in this community for 22 years. Had to think for a moment. I've come to a lot of city council meetings, and I am delighted to see all of you here tonight. It's awesome. I would like to give a shout out to Dano on Park Avenue for mobilizing his neighbors for a meeting with the city manager and Alan Potter, our Public Works Director, to discuss concerns about road improvements, flooding, and lighting. His meeting was fantastic. I went there to support the people of Park Avenue. Of course, where I live, I've got issues with my road, so I thought maybe I could learn some things from that. My road's not quite as big as his. But anyway, I want to give a shout out and a shout out to everyone that is watching on the YouTube live video stream. I don't know if people have the ability to comment. No. I know you were working on that at some point. Maybe we will see that in the future. As far as that's concerned, I spent a lot of time today looking at videos of our town hall meetings and looking at comp plans and the ELOs and other entities to learn a lot more about what's going to be happening here tonight. So anyway, glad to see you on YouTube tonight. Keep watching, and hopefully you'll be able to comment in future meetings. Thank you.
Thank you. Citizens' comments are still open for citizens. Seeing no further citizens, non-citizens. For non-citizens. Any non-citizens that would like to be at the mic? For non-agenda items. Okay?
Mayor, can I just correct something real fast?
Please.
The videos are not on YouTube. The old videos are on YouTube. The new videos are now accessed directly through the city's website and are being livestreamed through the city's website from now on. So you don't have to go to YouTube anymore to see the city council meetings. You can just go directly to the city's website.
Thank you very much. Any further citizens' comments before I close this section? Here are no further. Move on to city council comments. I'll start a little bit. Founder's Day staff, thank you. Incredible job. Incredible amount of vendors. Great parade. Thank you to you and your staff. Great job. Friday, there was, we had a workshop or a presentation by a gentleman spectacular from Panama City. And the reason I want to speak a little bit on this, I know we have a big agenda tonight. Panama City, as you know, in Mexico Beach got hit by a pretty major hurricane. And I'm not sure people realize the impact that a hurricane has when it's that size on an area. Things you don't even speak, that you wouldn't even think about that has to be done. And the gentleman was the city manager of Panama Beach.
Panama City.
Panama City, excuse me. An amazing gentleman. While he was talking, I looked him up. And the reason, pretty amazing, he was a major general. And the things he showed us and told us about a hurricane, I know our city manager is working on it. If you don't think it could happen to us, it was 60 miles away. And this is why I want to hit the Bahamas. And it cost him $185 million just in debris removal. Okay? And the presentation was spectacular. And I really think this is something that we as a city, I know Courtney, you're going to work on putting this together. You realize the amount of money that takes to weather ourselves through one of those disasters. He drove our city. And one of the things him and I talked about is most people in our town really take care of their houses. They put new roofs on and so forth. But realize in our city, and most of the buildings in our city were built in 1960 and '70. And there, even though you stuck a new roof on your house, that's, your shingles are probably still beyond, but the roof is going to be somewhere not to be found. So I just think it's something as a city that we really need to take a look at. And not that we wanted this, but plan so that we are ready to deal with disasters of this type. The storms, excuse me, are getting stronger. But the presentation was, Courtney, thank you for doing it spectacular. And I learned a ton on it. Stuff you would not even think about that he presented to us. So that was great. Thank you. And Courtney, for setting up Park Avenue and doing all that, thank you very much. Who else would like to go next?
Not too much to talk about. Courtney and I did a fast fly-in to Washington, DC about, gosh, it's been two weeks now. We went with the, met at the National Legate Cities Headquarters. We were there representing the Florida Legate Cities. Had several things we were lobbying for from the city's perspective. But we came there also representing Satellite Beach and the neighboring areas, discussing the PFOS and the PFOA situation that we have here. And we're not the only one. The whole entire country is having issues with these chemicals. And so we were there rallying for regulation standards, both drinking water and groundwater. And groundwater is the one I'm most concerned about because that affects us here. We don't know what the safe levels are. And we also don't know the effects of the food chain. So one of the big things we're asking for is trying to get funding so that we can test the marine life in the lagoon because we know what's in there. And so we don't know how it's affecting the marine life. It's very expensive testing. We've spent a large amount of money just from the city perspective digging wells and such. So I would suggest writing your representatives, asking them to support standards, not just .7 parts per trillion, probably something a little bit more scrunched in. And we met with Rubio's staff. We got to meet with Representative Wright from Governor DeSantis. We're hoping to try to get a meeting with him. That'd be cool. And we're going to do a resiliency meeting. And we're just working our way down the list there. So it was a really, a really great, great time up there. Made some good contacts, I think. And that's...
Presenting to the Florida Defense Alliance coming up.
The Defense Alliance, that's what it was. I don't know why I said resiliency. Anyway, so that was it.
Thank you. It's been busy the last couple of weeks since our last meeting.
On the 24th, along with the mayor, I was at a resiliency meeting at one of the coordinators from Orlando's Sustainability Department. They actually have a sustainability department in the city of Orlando. He came over and spoke on composting, bio solids. It was a great meeting that Nick and Alexa put together. So I was also at the youth council meeting that Mr. Jergudas referenced. And I agree with him. It was just a great opportunity. And Councilwoman Razicki was the one that put that together. We have 14 kids that had impeccable resumes. Some of them are sitting on the board. Some of them are actually staff liaisons to the board, working with the city. So this is a great way to get kids involved. The meeting went really well. They now have a chairman and a vice chair. And they're on their way looking at different things to help our city. I also attended Founder's Day on Saturday. And Carrie's mom came through with no rain because she's been making sure no rain comes. But it was a great event. It was probably one of the best Founder's Days. The parade was great. The new route was great, so I want to commend you for that. And along with the mayor, I was also at the Panama City managers' meeting. And the thing that impressed me most about what his talk was was the financial impacts to Panama City. And it wasn't so much the storm itself. It's the after-effects to your budget. They lost over 30% of the assessed value of their city, which means that when the tax rolls run around the next time, the money that that city had coming in declined by 30-some-odd percent based on the fact that the assessed value went down. The type of storm that hit that area, if it hit our city and we lost 35% of our budget, we'd have a real problem here in Satellite Beach. His message to us was reserves are important in your budget. You need to have reserves. Because in the first seven days, they had $14 million in reserves, and it was gone in seven days. So that was the message I got. You've got to make sure that you have money in the bank. It's like a savings account. You can't just try to operate on day-to-day. That's how people become homeless, and we don't want a homeless city. That's all I have.
Thank you. Just want to shout out to Rec Department, Police Department, and Public Works. Nice job on Founder's Day. Very well organized. And I think that's probably one of the biggest attendances I've ever seen. I mean, it was, people were looking for parking spots all over the place. It was very nice, and the feedback was really good. Also had an opportunity to speak for about an hour on the Satellite Beach's Fall Prevention and Aging Inflation Initiative that we have for our seniors. It's headed up by the Fire Department. And we got to talk about ways in which people can live in their homes for as long as they possibly can safely. As you know, we've been a communities for a lifetime, a city for many, many years. And our residents really desire to live here for as long as we possibly can. So we run these seminars. The Fire Department puts them on. And we had a really good turnout and a lot of good feedback. So it was nice to be able to get up there and talk about an hour for all the things that we have done to make it a good place to live for all of our residents, but especially those that are getting a little bit older. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Just final kudos for Founder's Day. It was a great day. I love that tradition. It has been a tradition for a very long time. So Saturday was a great day. And yes, we had our first youth council meeting. I am very impressed with our youth. They have wonderful ideas. We're going to have to rein them in. They have so many great ideas. And I will remind them, and I will remember myself, that we all do need to speak clearly into the microphones because their meetings will be filmed as well.
Thank you very much. Thank you for putting that together for us. It was great. It was really amazing, yeah, against us. So thank you. Any further comment, council? Okay, here are none. Moving on to Agenda Item 5, City Attorney's Report.
I don't have anything this evening.
Thank you. City manager?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to let everyone know that the Sustainability Board has a monthly nighttime bike ride on Friday, November 15th, at 7:00 PM at the Schechter Center. And it coincides with the food truck event with the PAL group. So it's becoming a very popular bike ride. It's getting bigger and bigger to the point where we're having to notify the police department about them going through the city. But that'll start at 7:00 PM. And we just asked that, you know, you need to bring lights for your bike. Otherwise, you can't ride, so. I received a card from Christina Johnston thanking the Fire Department for helping her. The Sustainability Board will be hosting a solar expo at the Civic Center right across the street, right there, 565 Cassia, on November 23rd, from 9:00 to 2:00. This will be, there'll be vendors, that solar vendors. There will be representatives from Pace Financing Corporations. There will also be people who understand the tax credit for solar. So if you're interested in solar, this would be a time to come and check out what's available to you out there to add solar to your house. The city council, the Sustainability Board, and Planning Advisory Board meetings will now be all livestreamed from our website. We are still struggling with ADA closed captioning. So this will be on your agenda for the next meeting. Because we have, it is, it's expensive, so we're going to have to talk to you about some options of how to do that. But it is important. We have to do it, and it's just a choice of how. So we'll be bringing that to you at your next meeting. On October 23rd, the East Central Florida Regional Planning Council and Partners celebrated the commitment among our regions, counties, cities, and government agencies to the newly-formed East Central Florida Regional Resilience Collaborative. And there were over 100 people in attendance, 27 formalized partners. This is our little certificate of partnership. Julie Finch, my assistant, was there to sign on behalf of the city of Satellite Beach. And at that meeting was Dr. Julia Nishwath, Florida's first Chief Resiliency Officer as the keynote speaker, which was really, you know, was great. We, I wish I could have been there, but I was in DC with Mindy. On October 28th, 2019, we did hold a meeting with residents of Park Avenue. And I want to thank you all for bringing that up. Dale, Ms. Abrams brought up thanking Dano, who is a resident on Park Avenue. And he has been persistently and gently pushing the improvements of his road for a long time. And we were able to budget it and get it done. And I think that's a good, he's a great example of good advocacy and working well with the community and the city to get something done for his street. So we are at the point where we are going to be resurfacing. We will be replacing all the curbing on that roadway. The citizens at the meeting overwhelmingly decided against sidewalks. And normally, if it's a three-street like that, we wouldn't, we wouldn't give them a choice. We would just put them in. But because it's such a smaller street and it's, you know, it's a little more local, we decided it might be better to give them that option. They didn't really seem to like that, but they may change their minds. So we're kind of keeping that option open at this point. They did request more lighting, so we are moving forward with that plan. And it'll be, all of that will be coming back to you for future, you know, approval. I'm going to turn it over to Alan Potter, who's going to talk about a recent drainage project completion along Anderson Court with our own staff. And this saved the city about $25,000. So can we get that up? Okay. The pictures are in your agenda packet. And this was completed by Bill York and Scott Arnold, who are in our audience right now.
They're behind you over your right shoulder.
Oh, there they are, over there. So this, and Alan, why don't you just talk to them briefly about it?
Okay. Unfortunately, somehow the PowerPoint...
The magic clerk.
The magic technology. Well, while we're waiting, I'm really glad that there's a lot of folks here tonight because that way they can really appreciate what we do in the Public Works Department. I know you folks know what we do on a daily basis. But a lot of the folks that are here, they see us driving around. They see us working here or there. Or they see four guys standing around a shovel and what the heck they're doing. So this will give you an idea of some of the things that we do that aren't seen. You know, they're seen by the residents, but they're really not seen by all of the residents. So this will give you a better idea of what we're doing.
Can you put that on a...
I received an email while they're doing that. I'll give you the background. Received an email from a resident that lives on Anderson Court saying that the stormwater wasn't draining into one of the catch basins at the end of the road. As Alan Dillon said, those catch basins go directly into the canal. You know, fortunately, the ones in the fountains have like grates in front of them that catch a lot of the grass. So initially, we thought that may have been the problem. We went to clean that. And then the next rainstorm that came, it didn't flow again. It flowed, but very slowly. So we looked into it a little deeper. Well, what we found was, first slide, please. Well, what we found was, move on to the first slide, please. That somehow the, the pipe was damaged a while ago. We don't know when it was done, how it was done, but when they opened up the hole, we tried to clean it with a vac truck. We could not get the, the vac in there, so we had to open it up. And we found this in between two houses in a very tight area of, um, Anderson Court. The only thing that we could do was to try to figure out how to replace the pipe. So, um, we had Joe Bear in town doing the, the stormwater project on Elm and Temple in DeSoto. So I approached them and asked them if they'd be willing to, to work on this as a change order to that project, you know, to avoid, you know, all the, the bid, all that hassle. So, um, they looked at it and they didn't want to touch it. So, um, that left one option. It was for us to take care of it or to go through an entire bid process to try to get somebody else in to do it. Scott Arnold and Bill York are supermen. That's all I can tell you. They went in, they looked at it, they assessed it and said, okay, well, let's do it. So, next slide, please. This is what the, the hole looked like once they opened it up in between the houses. Now there's paver, there was a paver patio there. You see all the pavers off to the side. Um, they moved all the pavers, they moved the fence, a wooden, uh, fence there. There is a chain link fence with a, a, a great deal of vegetation that was there, so they had to work around that and try to get a pipe in to make a connection. Go, next slide, please. So this is them putting the pipe in the ground. Next slide. And Bill, you can see Bill in there struggling to get the pipe, make the connection into, there's a, there's a box, there's a concrete box back there. It went from plastic pipe to concrete pipe that, that outfalls into the canal. Next slide, please. And this basically is what it looked like when they were done. They, they went back, repaired everything that, that they had done and when they walked away, this is how it looked. And, the next slide, please. And they repaired the fence, made every, got everything ready to put the, um, repaired the sod, of course, uh, got everything ready to put the pavers back. Next slide. And that's my shaking hand taking a picture, but the next slide gives you a better perspective. And that's what it looks like when we walked away. So for the folks that don't understand, you know, what, what that means, that right there probably means about a twenty-five thousand dollar savings to the city. Uh, we had, Joe Bear did not want to touch it. We talked to another company about slip lining and just to slip line it, they wanted, uh, twenty thousand dollars. So, uh, we bought a, a section of pipe, made the necessary repairs, did all the paver work bill and, um, one of the other guys, Dwayne, uh, put all the, uh, pavers back and, um, the resident was very, very happy because that paver patio there was actually sunken because of the, the damage to the pipe. So she got it back better than, than we found it. So, um, that's basically the job. Thank you. Good job, guys. Well, guys, how's the job, guys? And that's just, um, and indicative of the kind of work that we do when we go into somebody's yard and, and we've done, do we have a next slide? Is there a next slide for that? Next one? Is there, did you add that one, Courtney? The one with the, uh, areas that we did around the city? Well, there are numerous areas around the city, some on, on Lemon Street, uh, Time Street, on Kale, there was a couple of areas that we replaced pipe in the same manner. Um, and all told, in the last five or six years, I think we've probably saved the city over a hundred thousand dollars doing the projects ourselves. The problem with that is, because we're such a small department, if we do that, then we don't have time for other things, you know? So it, it consequently, it takes us a little longer because if we, you know, get called out for an emergency or something, then we have to do it. But these smaller jobs, as in this situation, we jump on them because they are emergency situations and we don't have a choice. We don't, we can't get out there and have somebody else do the job because that takes even longer. So, um, kudos to these guys and, you know, I, I'm just out there trying to give advice.
I think, and I think we, you know, we prefer, or you do at least, to do, when we're in the middle of people's houses like that, for you guys to do it because, uh, quite frankly, the staff cares more about returning it to look like that than a contractor would. So we have a big challenge of trying to get contractors to do that quality level of work, you know? So that's, when it, residents get real nervous when we start digging up their yards like that and, um, you know, and rightfully so. So, um, it's sometimes, it's better, I like it better when my staff does it because they're, I know that they're gonna return it this way.
Ridiculous.
Yeah.
Just, how many hours on that project? Just curious.
I think the guys all told were there about three weeks total, but, but that's kind of a weird number because they were there at some times and there were times where they couldn't work because of rain and things like that. Is that pretty accurate?
Okay.
Forty hours total. It would be, uh, I'd guess.
Yeah, I would've guessed more, but that's wonderful. Great job. No, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Mayor, real quick, the, um, the other kudos to Public Works I just wanted to give out was, you know, there is a Space Coast Sports Turf Association. I didn't, I had no idea, but there is. And, um, they, they really need a lot about sustainability with regard to turf and most of those members are golf course, golf courses or, and Patrick Air Force Base is part of that. Um, but we're, we, we go to those meetings a lot and, uh, our, our Public Works Department does to, and they're, apparently their, um, contribution to those meetings is so valued that they have placed, uh, Mike Rowley on the board with John here as an alternate. So they're actually serving on the board of this association now because of their expertise in those fields. So I thought that was a good thing to do.
John, Alan, thank you. And your staff, always.
Hold on.
Questions for City Manager and the Council? Is that Courtney? Thank you. Move on to Agenda Item Seven, which is Resolution Number Ten Twenty. Jim?
Resolution Number Ten Twenty, a resolution of the City of Satellite Beach, Brevard County, Florida, in support of the Brevard Zoo's efforts to bring a world-class aquarium to Brevard County, providing an effective date. That's a reading of ordinance number Ten Twenty. And I will just add that, as you, some of you may know, I occasionally do legal work for the zoo, but I didn't have anything to do with this resolution, so.
Okay, questions from council? Go ahead, have a...
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution Number, uh, Ten Twenty. Second.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Breimer, second by Councilman Montanaro. At this time, open up for public comment on Agenda Item Seven.
Diane Douglas, I'll be brief. Um, when you say support for it, is that monetary or in what support way are we supporting? Just that we're like yay?
Budgets and taxes, none.
Yeah, we're like yay. Okay, okay, good. All right, thank you. Good question.
Public comments still open? There are no further public comment? Back to council. Courtney?
I was just clarifying, the zoo is, um, proceeding with this project and they're including countywide, um, a lot of the leaders in Brevard County to plan actual aquariums. It's very community-driven, um, and it's, the meetings are really fun. There's, there are a lot of, um, you know, it's, it's, it's just fun to plan something this big. Um, and they're looking for political support, community support, and, and expressions of that, um, because they're, as they move forward, they're trying to give, you know, a lot of private donations and things like that and they want to make sure that they can say the community supports this project. So that's the purpose of this resolution tonight. It's been also sent out to the rest of the cities in Brevard County.
Perfect. Thank you.
So they, they just want a picture too before...
Yep.
I was just gonna say, I think it's a wonderful work, not only our community visitors that come to Brevard County, so.
Great.
I think that's great.
Thank you.
This is, this, I think this is also part of the education that, you know, our residents in the county need for the stuff that Alan's talking about when lawn goes into the canals or goes down to the storm waters. There's, this, this project is gonna be something that helps, um, educate people that live here and people that don't live here.
Thank you. Further? Here are none.
Councilman Gibson?
Yes.
Councilman Rosicky?
Yes.
Councilman Montanaro?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Breimer?
Yes.
And Mayor Tino?
Yes, motion passes. So just get a, if they'd like to have a picture with us, um, so, uh...
Who's taking the picture?
Stephanie? I'm not sure. My city manager said we need to come up.
All of us?
All of us?
All of us. Okay. She's back on.
Hmm?
She's back on. She's... All right, ready? One, two, three. One more? Okay, one, two, three. One, two, three. Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay. Counsel's permission, um, move Agenda Item Twelve next.
Sure.
Okay. Uh, discuss, take action, accepting a donation from the Gail Meredith Seaside Community Forest Program for a tree canopy project at City Hall.
Okay, thank you.
Liz, thank you.
Mayor and City Council, um, we had talked about the passing of, longtime resident of Satellite Beach, Gail Meredith. Um, she was, uh, very involved with the environment, with the Sable Lagoon, tax, uh, um, and so when she passed, it was a real hardship for our city because she was always here supporting all of the sustainability issues and lagoon. And in her honor, a group of folks came together to create the Gail Meredith Seaside Community Forest Program. Um, before Gail passed, she had a vision of a tree at every home. She wanted to see canopy trees and so in her memory, this fund was set up and the committee has raised over two thousand dollars. And so what we're asking you today is to accept the committee's donation of the two thousand dollars so that we could then go after a KBB, uh, grant, a matching grant for two thousand and to start a pilot project, uh, at, here at City Hall in her honor. And as the committee raises money and we get more donations and, um, and then direct staff to also create a program, a, a tree planting program for the city. And I was, um, amazed at how many tree programs are out there currently. I didn't realize City Melville and City Cape Canaveral. So it's, it's catching on and we want to be a part of that and we want to do this in Gail Meredith's honor, so.
Thank you, Liz, for, for heading it very much. Questions?
I'll make a motion to accept the donation from Gail Meredith Seaside Community Forest Program.
Thank you. A motion by Vice Mayor Breimer?
Second, I just want to make just a quick comment that...
By Councilwoman Gibson.
I just adored Gail. She was one of our friends. Um, she's a beautiful, if any of you don't know who she is, um, she was an amazing addition to our community. She was wonderful and the fact that, you know, we're doing this is, is, it stands huge for who she was and, um, I'm very sad that she's passed, so.
Thank you. Vince, thank you very much for all your work and everything.
Yeah, this, uh, Gail was a member of the, uh, of the leadership of the, uh, Brevard County, of our Indiana Lagoon Coalition. And so that's a, a nonprofit that was entitled, we're, you know, we're fully capable of raising money, so we decided to do a fundraiser, actually a donate button on a Facebook page and, uh, we very quickly got forty gifts, uh, over two thousand dollars, uh, and, uh, from a lot of, uh, Gail's friends, some of them are in the room here.
Thank you.
Vince, I, I was at that meeting. I was there that night when you guys got together and I was impressed with, because it was a little bit short and people right there were going, okay, I'm doing, so, um, it worked really well. Thank you for...
Yeah, I also want to commend, uh, Nick Sanzoni for his work in the planning of this and one of the, uh, environmentally endangered lands program, uh, land management, uh, people has actually, uh, been working on the plans for what tree goes where. And we're planning on having interpretive signage so that, uh, you know, this is a magnolia tree. If you want to grow it in your yard, this is what you need to have, that kind of thing.
Great, thank you. At this time, um, I'll open it up for public comment on Agenda Item Twelve.
Ron Jagudis, Satellite Beach resident, CRA resident on the beach. I commend this program and I think there should be more stewardship here in the community to bring this program more forward. I did not see it totally advertised, but I do believe that we should do things with trees because I remember the days, as I'm sure the gentleman remembers, Johnny Appleseed. And I think we need to institute this program further and maybe you could get the Resiliency Committee to commit to the DeSoto, um, project that we just did for canop- a canopy program, uh, in regards to having trees over there to protect citizens from the sunlight and UV and so forth because artificial means may not be the only approach. I think that needs to be looked at and I request the Mr. Mayor and I request the City Manager to look into that, that somehow we can create a canopy over there because we do have the winter months that are great, but the summer months are, as we all know, tough. And somehow create a program over there in conjunction with what's going on at City Hall. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comment? Here are none. Bring it back to council. Any further counsel?
Councilman Montanaro?
Yes.
Councilman Rosicky?
Yes.
Councilman Breimer?
Yes.
Mayor Tino?
Yes, motion passes. Thank you. The next Agenda Item being Number Eight will take in three parts to it. So council, remember th- that when we vote on this, unless we pull an item from it, uh, if you vote no on one item, it affects all the items, okay?
Agenda Item Nine.
So we have three consent Agenda Items today. Approval for the Florida Inland Navigation District Project. We have Resolution Ten Twenty-One and Approval of City Council Meeting Date for 2020.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent Agenda.
Second.
I have, um, excuse me, one second, Jim. I have a motion by Councilman Montanaro, second by Councilwoman Gibson. Discussion on any of the, these Agenda, Consent Agenda Items from council.
I just have two questions.
Yes.
Um, in regards to the kayak launch, um, who will it be built by and who will it be maintained by? Is it our Public Works Department?
It's ours, yeah.
So it'll be built and maintained?
The, uh, it'll have to go out the bid.
Okay.
Well, and once, once we get it constructed, uh, you know, find, go through the bid process, we can't do anything until after the winter months because of the manatees and it'll have to be moved during the winter months, so it'll have to be a mobile-type situation. But, um, once the bidder is selected, uh, the builder is selected, then of course we'll get a one-year warranty out of it and then it belongs to us.
Thank you.
Thank you. Further questions from council? At this time, open up for public comment on...
I need a resolution.
I'm sorry. Jim?
Resolution Number Ten Twenty-One, a resolution of the City of Satellite Beach, Brevard County, Florida, in support of Florida Natural Resources Management Department Legislative Request for Next Generation Sewage and Biosolids Treatment Pilot Project, providing effective date. Reading of Resolution Ten Twenty-One.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Further questions? This time, open up for public comment on the consent Agendas.
Ron Jagudis, Satellite Beach. Can it be further explained tonight what the consent item is in regards to...
And once, once we get it constructed, you know, find, go through the bid process, we can't do anything until after the winter months because of the manatees and it'll have to be moved during the winter months, so it'll have to be a mobile type situation. But once the bidder is selected, the builder is selected, then of course we'll get a one year warranty out of it and then it belongs to us.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Further questions from counsel? At this time, open up for public comment on...
There. I need to read the resolution.
I'm sorry.
Resolution number 1021, a resolution of the City of Satellite Beach, Brevard County, Florida, in support of Florida Natural Resources Management Department Legislative Request for Next Generation Sewage and Biosolids Treatment Pilot Project. Providing effective date, reading of resolution 1021.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Further questions? This time, open up for public comment on the consent agendas.
Ron Jagudis, Satellite Beach. Can it be further explained tonight what the consent item is in regards to the resolution for the pilot program so people understand, citizens understand that we know what it's about? It may have been discussed in the past, but I request the mayor to disclose what this is about or he can direct it to staff just to let us a brief hearing on what it's about. A brief synopsis.
Thank you.
That's all I ask.
Okay. Courtney?
Thank you, Mayor. I think a lot of people have read in the newspaper regarding the application of biosolids as an agricultural fertilizer in Brevard County. And because of that recent outcry, Brevard County has submitted a request for a pilot project to the state of Florida. It's basically an appropriation request to do a regional pilot treatment facility. And so, you know, obviously the cities are very supportive of that, providing an alternative to biosolids. And what it would basically do is a treatment facility that would further process biosolids either for separating the nitrogen from the phosphorus and providing a better fertilizer product and product or burning it for biofuel. So that's the, that's the point of the resolution.
Thank you. The mics still open? Any further comment on the consent agenda items? Here are none, back to counsel, further counsel?
Counselor Rosicky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Breimer?
Yes.
Counselwoman Gibson?
Yes.
Counselor Moncero?
Yes.
Mayor Tino?
Yes, motion passes. Moving on to agenda number nine. Everybody good? Yep. Okay. Let me explain the process. This will be, there is a presentation by our city manager. First, you'll hear from our city attorney, our city manager, and then the developer will have an opportunity to speak, at which time counsel will ask questions, then open up for public, for public input. We had a sign up sheet, so if you're signed up there, you will be heard. To help streamline in this, we want everybody, this to be an orderly process. The second thing we'd like is probably a lot of you have the same questions. So what we're going to do is you have your three minutes, the questions you ask, the city manager is making a note of those questions. At the end of the comment period, the city manager will go back and will answer those questions since we know we probably will have duplicate questions for safety of time and getting all your questions answered. That's the process we're going to use tonight. Understood? Three minutes, please be courteous to the person speaking, okay? We'd appreciate that. Jim? Okay, hold on, excuse me, yes. At this time, I will open up a public hearing on resolution number 1024. Jim?
Resolution number 1024, a resolution of the City of Satellite Beach, Brevard County, Florida, amending the conceptual plan for Pelican Coast Plan Unit Development approved in resolution number 791 by amending the approved site plan and uses allowed in PCN3 Pelican Coast North to allow hotel and single-family uses and reduce the number of multifamily units as depicted in the revised conceptual plan approved by this resolution, providing an effective date. That's a reading of resolution number 1024.
Thank you. Jim? Is she going to go first on the report?
Yes. Basically, from time to time, the mayor asked me to provide some background regarding basically what the obligations, for lack of a better word, are for the city when considering applications for land use changes. And so basically, this is going to be a primer. I'm not going to get into the details per se of what this application is about other than some, a few comments at the end. But basically, historically, from a zoning perspective, there were no zoning regulations until 1920s. And the regulation was done based on nuisance laws up until that particular point in time when the Supreme Court, United States Supreme Court recognized zoning regulations. In Florida and pretty much any other state, historically, decisions regarding approval or denial of development orders and permits, which is what zoning decisions are now referred to as, cannot be arbitrary and must be based upon regulations in existence at the time of the application. In other words, the property owners actually have a right to rely on what the zoning, the current zoning regulations are when developing plans for permitting. And if denials are made, they, and they're not based upon these general parameters, they can lead to lawsuits, which is part of the issue that the city obviously wants to avoid, including state and federal constitutional takings claims depending upon the facts of each case. And there's also certain case law that allows property owners to acquire or have a recognizable right to what's called reasonable investment backed expectations and to be compensated for those. In addition to those general parameters, the Florida Legislature has entered the picture, especially in the last decade or so, to impose more stringent obligations on local governments when they're reviewing development or applications for development permits. The most current iteration of one law specifically affecting local governments, which was amended again this year, currently includes, among other items, specific limitations on timing to review applications for development permits or development orders, requiring a local government to specifically provide the basis for deficiencies that local government may find in an application, requiring the local government, if it denies a development permit or development order application, to specifically state the basis for the denial. And a local government cannot require as a condition of processing or issuing a development permit or a development order that an applicant obtain a permit from a state or federal regulatory agency. There's a minor exception I don't want to get into, but that's just what the general obligation is. In addition to those items, the legislature's also provided statutory remedies to review actions of local governments in which it is alleged that government regulations as applied inordinately burden, restrict, or limit private property rights. That particular statute is known as the Burt J. Harris Private Property Rights Protection Act. There's another one that relates to improperly imposed exactions and a third one that relates to, quote, unfairly, excuse me, unreasonable or unfairly burden the use of one's property, which is known as the Florida Land Use and Environmental Dispute Resolution Act. Also this year, the legislature adopted a stat, or enacted a statute which does not create a specific cause of action, but it directs the property appraiser in every county in the state of Florida to provide on its website what's referred to as a property owner's bill of rights. And the purpose of which was to identify certain existing rights that the legislature wanted to have posted on there. The legislature also said that the list was not a comprehensive list and, but notwithstanding the proviso, the general, the general premise of the notice states, your rights and protections include, among others, the right to acquire, possess, and protect your property, the right to use and enjoy your property, the right to due process, the right to just compensation for property taken for a public purpose, and the right to relief or payment of compensation when a new law, rule, regulation, or ordinance unfairly affects your property. So that's the general context that both historic takings law, for lack of a better way of putting it, and the recent enactments by the state of Florida have established the parameters for any reviews for use of property. With respect to the property located at the northeast corner of the PUD, which is what we're here for tonight, the overall PUD was approved approximately 15 years ago by city council and it also provided the uses allowed in each of the subcategories or subareas of the PUD. My understanding is, is that the uses remained unchanged since that time. The, the PUD was established when the area that was formerly South Housing was, or where there was a referendum that was undertaken by the city and was approved for annexation of the city. And as another note, the development of the property north of Shearwater was required to be developed from the west to the east as provided in the PUD approval. And the conceptual plan amendment that's being proposed is to seek to convert a portion of the previously approved conceptual plan of all multifamily units to a mixture of single-family, multifamily, and hotel use. As a last note, it's my understanding that there's many people here tonight that are, or there was information out there that were, there were people concerned about the impact of this development on turtle nesting season. And as an initial note, the purpose of the review this evening is for conceptual plan, so the issues regard, specifically regarding the turtle nesting habitat will not be addressed at this point in time. That will be addressed at the time most likely when the application for the building permit is submitted. Having said that, the city code does currently require any exterior lighting to be shielded in such a manner so that the source of the light is not visible from any point on the beach between the toe of the ocean bluff and the waters of the Atlantic Ocean between the hours of six, or excuse me, 9:00 PM and 6:00 AM during the period of May to October 31 each year. This provision actually seems to be broader than what the model standards are that DEP has out there for, for turtle nesting. It appears to only apply to new coastal construction, which I don't know that that would necessarily apply to this since it's west of A1A. That's pretty much all I need to say right now.
Okay, thank you very much. At this time, the city manager has a presentation on this particular property. Courtney?
Thank you, Mayor. I think the, we're probably going to overlap a little bit, but I'm going to try to give you the timeline and just really for the public. I just want to make sure that, you know, people understand this was done 15 years ago, so I'm getting this information. I was not here at this, at that point in time for the city. I didn't even live here. I was living in Jacksonville, so I want to make sure that, you know, I'm, I'm basically voicing what counsel has told me over the past and then, you know, what we've gained through public records, but this has been done, you know, a long time ago. But this is the site, this is the overall plan unit development. And just so the public understands, a plan unit development is just a type of zoning category that requires a lot more public approvals than a regular zoning district. So for example, if, you know, let's say a property was demolished in our commercially zoned district and the landowner came in for a site plan approval, it would not go to city council. If they wanted to develop with, under their zoning district, it would just go straight to staff. We would review the engineering and approve it and give them a building permit and move on. In this instance, this zoning district requires three levels of council public approval. And that's, the first stage is a concept plan. The second stage is the engineering, which is called a preliminary master plan. And then the third stage is called the final concept plan, which is also considered a final plat in the world of, of development approval. So, so they are, already have a concept plan approval and they're looking to amend that current concept of plan approval. How do I do this? Is it? How do I do it? So this is the project location. Unfortunately, there is an article that showed the Hightower Beach Preservation Area as the project location, which was, caused us a lot of grief here at City Hall. But the project location is actually across the, the street on A1A, from A1A, on the former base housing site. And this is one section of that property, that larger piece. Just to give you an idea, you know, when, the idea of the, the city, you know, with preservation, and I've given this presentation at many of the town halls, so there's probably a lot of people, maybe, hopefully, that actually went to the town halls and saw this presentation, but we have 11 public crossovers outside of Pelican Beach and Hightower Beach Park. The neighboring city has three. So if it gives you any indication of the importance our historically, our city has historically put on beach acquisition and public access to the beach. The most recent purchase that we have completed was Crowdy Park and that's .71 acres. And I just put in here, this in here, so you understand the cost of acquiring property along the beach. That property called, it cost us $2.25 million in 2005. So you can imagine what it costs today. That was a, we saved that property from a six-story condominium unit project. This is an example of the open space and recreation we provide in the City of Satellite Beach compared to the two neighboring cities. So we have 147 acres of recreation property compared to 59 in Indian Harbor Beach and 17 in the Atlantic. Samson's Island, for example, was donated to the city where, you know, you have neighboring cities that actually developed those islands. We kept ours free of development. So those are some of the impacts of these decisions are made. You know, we, we acquired a lot of the beachfront to preserve it and the idea of doing that was to encourage the development to occur on the west side of A1A. The Pelican Coast Development is actually the former Patrick Air Force Base South Housing Area. So those of you who are new to the community may not have remembered the condition of these homes. When I was, when I was a teenager, riding my bike through these homes and visiting friends, they were bad then. And I don't want to say how old I am, but I'm not a teenager anymore. So these were built in 1957. There was 999 housing units on this property. You had to be a family, you had, this was family housing, so you had to have a spouse and children to be able to live here. And this, the, so you can imagine the population at this, at this point in history. This property has always been served by, in the past, it was Cocoa Water and then Cocoa Beach Sanitary Sewer. So the, the property is, the rest of the city is served by City of Melbourne Water and Brevard County Sewer. And I know that's odd to people, but if you think back when this was built, it was built before anything else was. So that was, you know, there was no, every, everything that was built over here was on septic until Brevard County came in and put it on sewer. So the, this property was always served by the City of Cocoa Beach Sewer. And it still is. And it will remain that way. At the time, there is no stormwater treatment on this property, so if you go back to that parcel, there's no stormwater. That's the historic base housing area. There's no stormwater treatment on that property at all. Oh, there was, it was right there, sorry. So that's what it looks, it looked like. And it has recreation areas that are starting to decline. The city has taken over the soccer field area for me, you know, to maintain it, to keep that online. But the rest of the property at the time had no stormwater facilities at all. In 1998, Patrick Air Force Base issued a notice to privatize South Housing. And as part of a federal installation, it was neither in the county or the city jurisdiction. So when they went to privatize, they, the Patrick Air Force Base would no longer be servicing that property. It would be serviced by either a city or a county. And they were trying to figure out where they wanted to go. They decided that they wanted to annex into the city to access our city services. And the city at the time was agreeable to waiving the permit fees and providing an onsite inspector to expedite the construction. And Patrick Air Force Base basically approached the city, and the mayor can probably talk to you better about this than I can, but approached the city and said, you know, for us to be able to privatize this housing, we need this density to make it work. And that means, so when they, when they sell off property, they're basically, or when they privatize military housing, the cost of constructing those housing units exceed the amount of the housing allowance that's given to the, the people who are renting the property. So they have to subsidize that to the developer and they do that by selling off portions of the property and that's what they did here. When the city was approached by Patrick Air Force Base, they decided to make sure that the residents were interested in this. The, the city council at the time was interested in the tax base that the area would provide as well as the ability to control the development going on the property. And the city council placed a referendum on the ballot in 1999, asking the residents if the annexation of South Housing should occur. And this is the exact wording of that referendum and this is the result. 77% voted yes and 23% voted no. Seventy-seven percent voted yes, and 23% voted no. After the referendum direction, the city approved a plan unit development, PUD, for the Patrick Air Force Base South Housing Area in August of 2000. In 2001, the city council approved ordinance number 788, which designated the South Housing Area as a PUD RLA with a maximum density of six units an acre. The annexation was effective on October 1st, 2003, and despite what you read on social media, all notices were completed. And the PUD provided for all property north of Shearwater to be developed as private housing, and all south, all property south of Shearwater was retained by Patrick Family Housing and remained dedicated to military housing. In 2004 to 2000, or from 2000 to 2004, at least 15 public meetings were held on this development. The city, in that, in those time periods, felt that the annexation would benefit because the new homes would meet current code. Water connection then changed from the City of Cocoa to the City of Melbourne. The sewer connection remained at Cocoa Beach. There was a master stormwater management plan and the increases to the city's tax base with non-military housing areas. The city was concerned that if it was given, or if it was annexed into the county, that the city would have to provide the fire and EMS services anyway as part of the automatic aid agreement, which I think a lot of residents in South Patrick Shores think they live in the City of Satellite Beach because they see maybe our fire trucks and our police department over there a lot, but that's, that's, we respond to that area a lot because of mutual aid and automatic aid agreements. This was the approved concept plan at the time. So as you can see in the far, is there like a little red thing now? In the far right, upper right corner, that's the 27 acres we're talking about. You see all those little yellow buildings? That was all condominium developments. So the status of this PUD is that the Montecito Town Homes are being finished current, currently, and the Pelican Coast privatized military housing is approximately one-third built out. The remaining area south of Shearwater Parkway, you know, that big vacant area, is slated for more military housing and is in an agreement for the next 30 years. So you may see military housing in 30 years, or it may remain vacant for 30 years. So that's the, the choice between, that's an agreement between the property owner, which is Hunt Pinnacle, they're a private military housing provider, and the Patrick Air Force Base. The current density for the development that has already been built already is Montecito and Pelican Coast is six units per acre, and you can see the, that's an average, and Montecito Single Family is at 3.9, the Montecito Multifamily is at 7.15, and the Pelican Coast is 3.3. This is some of it before the Town Homes started, but you can see the large green and little black areas there. Those are all stormwater, and that's the difference between today's development and yesterday's development, is that we have to scrunch these lots into smaller areas because 20%, even 25, sometimes 30% of the property now is dedicated to stormwater, and that's for both flood and water quality improvements, and that's state and federal law now. And we, we actually enforce a stringent, a more stringent code in the City of Satellite Beach. I wanted to go through the Ramada because this is the second question, I get constantly, but I also want to make sure people understand the, the timing of some of these projects. So now we're, we're in about, 2004, the hurricanes destroyed the Ramada Inn. If anybody remembers that, I remember the Ramada. I think most of us, you know, we rode our bikes through it. A lot of people skip school through that parking lot. I did not.
Don't listen to her.
But that, that, it was unfortunate when this building was destroyed because it, you know, it was always a landmark in the city, and we, the, this was a struggle for the city council at the time because the new property owner purchased the property for a lot of money, was not a willing seller, and, and they were also developing another property across the street from Elwood, and that, it was in 2005, and the city council at the time said, hey, if you don't develop Elwood and you dedicate it to us as, as preservation, then we'll give you 10 more feet on Oceana. And so that was how they did that, and that's how we ended up with the vacant parcel across from Elwood, the preservation area across from Elwood. There were 23 public meetings about that. It was a very controversial time for city council, and because of that, that development led to the city council putting in the charter, or putting on the ballot, this charter referendum. And this was in 2006. So the Pelican Coast Development was approved prior to 2006, which is when the charter referendum went to the ballot. And this is the wording of that referendum. Shall Satellite Beach amend its charter to include new Section 8.04 requiring referendum approval before following can become effective? A residential density increases above densities allowed on the date of referendum. Amendments to the city's land development regulations, I, increasing residential density or height above that allowed on the date of referendum. So that's, that's the referendum. So we, if we can't change the code, our land development regulations to increase height or density without going to the voters, and that was from the date of 2006. The city is not recommending to change the height or density of this development or any of the other previous developments that I just talked about. That was all done before this referendum. So those land development regulations were adopted before this charter. So the idea that the city is violating its charter in any discussions about this development is untrue. Again, this is the approved concept plan that they have the right to do now. The property owners, oh, and then the city council, because the property owners had a right to do 398 units of condominium units up to 85 feet, the city council in 2017 requested staff to pursue a hotel for that property. So we engaged a consultant to look into the market needs for a hotel in the larger Brevard County area, and the research indicated that the recent space activity, the commercial space economy would support a hotel, and the space industry was very excited with the idea of allowing their contractors and employees to, to stay in a hotel like this. The property sold in this timeframe, and the new owners were interested in pursuing the development of a hotel as well. The city council attempted to include a hotel in the zoning designation, but ultimately decided to wait until they saw a revised plan to change the zoning. And that, since the hotel was being added, the developer, and they're going to talk about their project, decided to reduce the residential density, and of course, staff is supportive of that idea. The view is a 27-acre site. This is what they're asking to change at this point, so... They're asking to change the 398 condominium units to 72 lots of single-family, 147 units of condominiums, and then add a 220-unit hotel. They're asking to remove the 200-feet building width limitation to allow for 224-feet building widths. And just to give you a comparison of what that looks like, I provided the Oceana building widths for you, it's 239 feet. They also want to remove the seven-story requirement within the 85-feet height restriction. You similarly did this, I believe, last year with a code change for the single-family residential area to remove the two-story requirement under the 35-foot height restriction, because basically the premise was, it's 35 feet, you're not changing the height, so why can't people do three stories instead of two? It's not going to change the height. And that's what they're wanting to, is they're going to build under the 85-feet height, but they're struggling to figure out why they're limited to seven stories. So that's their, their request. This is their conceptual plan layout. There is big plans right there, and I have some extra ones if people need to see them, but this is what they're looking for. The, the majority of the site area is dedicated to single-family homes, and then they're looking at three condominium buildings, not four, three, and then a hotel. To give you some facts about that, just as a summary, the development is on a redevelopment site across State Road A1A from Hightower Beach Park. It's not on to Hightower Beach Park, and the developer has the legal and current right to develop 398 units of condominiums on this site. They're proposing 290, 19 units of condominiums and single-family. They want to eliminate one condominium building in their, in their, the, the previous concept plan for a 222-unit hotel. And to give you an idea of the size of that, I provided the hotel sizes in the four hotels that are in Indian Harbor Beach and the Atlantic that are actually on the beach and not across the street from A1A. The Crown Plaza has 290 units, the Radisson has 168, the Hilton has 201, and the Doubletree has 205. The developer is requesting a height, it's not requesting a height increase, they are currently allowed to develop up to 85 feet. The city is not violating our charter with this application, and the charter referendum requirement was adopted by the voters after this zoning was placed on this property. The land use designation for this property is not commercial, but rather mixed-use RLA PUD, so the commercial land use district policies in the conference of plan do not apply to this property. The zoning rights for this property are already established, and the property owner purchased this property for $13.5 million, and to give you an idea of what that means to the city is our annual budget is $13.5 million. So the city obviously can't afford to purchase this property. In terms of zoning, this is the zoning for the Montecito Single Family area, okay? And this is what the property owner wants to do, something very similar on the 27 acres. So the Montecito-sized lots, and so this is the development regulations for the Montecito Single Family Neighborhood. So that's the area that's in the left corner at the top, okay? This is the zoning for the current property, which only allows medium-density multifamily, and this is the zoning regulations for that, which has, it's all associated with only multifamily property, and it has a building height of 85 feet with a maximum of seven stories currently. The required code changes to allow them to do what they want to do is, basically, we would have to adopt the PCN1 into the PCN3. So basically, the same zoning for the Montecito, we'd have to add to their zoning. To add the hotel to the PUD, the PUD as a whole is a 245, eight acres, which allows for a total of 5% commercial use, and this is a maximum of 12.4 acres, and the proposed commercial use within the conceptual plan constitutes 4.77 acres. If the city council wants to include the hotel in the PUD, the zoning would have to be amended to allow the hotel use in the PUD zoning district. In terms of concurrency, I hear a lot of concerns with sewer, which is very, you know, understandable. The sanitary sewer, however, is provided by the City of Cocoa Beach, not Brevard County. Brevard County provides the sewer to the rest of the city, and Brevard County sewer utility accounted for over 60% of the discharges during the hurricanes by all utilities in Brevard. So those, that is the utility that has the issue. Cocoa Beach has a very well-run utility. I think they've actually included recently a project with the Save Our Indian River Lagoon to, to provide additional treatment to stop hurricane discharges. So they're, they're a very forward-thinking utility, so they don't have the maintenance issues that Brevard County does. Cocoa Beach has the capacity of 1.8 to 2 million gallons per day, and the estimated additional capacity for this development is 83,950 gallons. All onsite sanitary sewer lines will be replaced with new pipes, thus not, no past useful life leaking systems will be used. So this is, all of the infrastructure under the ground will be redone. Water concurrency available certificate has been obtained by the City of Melbourne. The solid waste capacity reservation certificate has been approved, and the Brevard County Schools, School District has provided a school capacity determination that is positive, that basically says there's capacity in the schools for this development. The, so, so in state, state law, under Chapter 163, requires all development has to, with their, when they're approved, all public facilities have to be available concurrent with the development. That's why we call this concurrency, so just to give you that explanation. So they have met all of their concurrency requirements. There's also a lot of, quite frankly, misinformation on environmental testing. The developer has had a full Phase 1 environmental site assessment, and this is the, I think, I believe, the third in Phase 1 environmental site assessment that had been done on this property since the base sold the property. It has a limited Phase 2 environmental site assessment conducted by Universal Engineering Sciences. Detection exceeding allowable limits of gasoline, kerosene, analytical group analytes in the ground were not detected. That was what they, I think the financial institution requested that, if I'm not mistaken. That was not a city request. The city did request, however, a PFOS and PFOA test, and these testings were, it was detected in the groundwater with concentrations between 27.7 and 130 nanograms per liter. This testing is very consistent with the, the results are very consistent with the levels that we're finding throughout Brevard County and throughout the state of Florida, unfortunately. So this is, that's why we're such advocates from the city's perspective about this chemical, because we, we, you know, we knew it was a problem when we started seeing the reports coming out from the base, but the developer did do that test, just at our request. There are no standards for this chemicals yet, where that's what we're requesting, but the, the developer did provide that test for us on their own. Before demolition of the former military housing, asbestos remediation was performed, so that, a lot of the housing had asbestos in it, all of that remediation was done during, during and prior to demolition. The land use of the parcels have always been residential. There's no commercial, industrial, military operations other than housing has ever existed on the site. In terms of traffic impacts, the land use for this property was established in 2004, and as such, the impact was reviewed by the DOT at the time. So DOT is only going to look at capacity impacts when you're changing the land use category of the property, and that's with the large-scale conference of plan amendment, and that has, that's already been completed 15 years ago. And although the traffic study describes capacity impacts to roadway sections, FDOT permitting engineers have indicated that they will not be requiring any widening and will support, but they will support any improvements to address turn lane deficiencies and intersection deficiencies that the city requires at the engineering phase of the project. So right now, on this approval, there are no off-site improvements that are discussed at this point because engineering has not been completed. It'll be, if the, if the city council does support and approve the resolution in the concept plan, then the city, then the developer will enter into engineering phases, and that's, at that time when we will start requiring turn lane and intersection improvements, and we are expecting those to be needed. The developer is proposing to construct a pedestrian overpass from the hotel to Hightower Beach Park to reduce the impacts to the traffic light and increase safety. That pedestrian overpass will be available to the public to access from Shearwater Parkway. And, let's see, taxes and fees. The developer's impact fee requirements are expected to be approximately $2 million, with the majority of that going to schools and transportation. The city does participate in the county's transportation impact fee program, so this, the money that is coming to the transportation impact fee program will come back to the City of Satellite Beach for improvements. We don't normally need capacity improvements in our community, so we will normally spend money like that on sidewalk and bike lane improvements. money like that on sidewalk and bike lane improvement. The hotel is expected to generate approximately over $500,000 per year in bed tax or tourism development taxes. The property taxes for this development are expected to be approximately $1.6 million per year. And other fees and taxes that have not been estimated yet are stormwater fees and sales tax revenue to the SORREL fund. And when I call SORREL, it's the Save Our Indian River Lagoon Fund.
And the $1.6 million is not all our money, it's coming into our...
No, that's all the city's.
That's our portion?
Yeah. So that's only the city's impact, but, and the, when you have a development of this size, so any development, it's hard to explain it to residents, so when you look at, like the City of West Melbourne, and you look at their tax rate, it's real low. It's real low because they have a bunch of new development happening all the time, and it adds to their, it drives up their revenues. So every time they get new development, they get new construction, and that new construction basically pays for their city. So they don't ever have to raise their tax rates. They can keep them pretty low. Our city doesn't have a lot of new construction, so we rely solely on property valuation increases to cover our cost increases. So a property development of this size, that would just, would without a doubt result in a tax decrease for existing residents, because there's no way we need $1.6 million. You know, I mean, it would be nice to put in reserves, I have to say that. But, you know, we like to balance that, and if the council did approve a project like this, that would be, you know, an additional benefit to the current residents. Other considerations, so it's necessary to understand that this is a concept plan approval, meaning that engineering and all those details are done at the engineering phase. And that includes, I know there's a lot of people concerned about turtle nesting. So are we. We have one of the strongest ordinance in the county. We have already been discussing this with UCF and Brevard County Natural Resources, and I think, you know, the recommendation so far has been that we will need to close the beach at 10:00 PM during nesting season to protect the nests and things like that. I think the developer is probably going to, we've asked them to include educational components at the hotel if the council approves that concept, and I think that they're going to talk about that proposal when they come up. They also are looking at, which I didn't put in here, but they will be putting all of the power lines along A1A in front of their development underground. I think during the storm of Matthew, everybody saw that, that, you know, knockover that affected about a third of the city, so that would be another benefit to the city. The proposed amendment from the original concept plan and zoning is why the applicant is requesting approval to the city council. And should the concept plan amendment not be approved, the developer still has the legal right to build as many as 17 multi-story multifamily condominium buildings with a height of 85 feet and up to 398 units. That's their current legal right today. The action requested this evening by the applicant is approval resolution that would approve the concept plan contingent on the city council subsequently approving the ordinance to amend the zoning for the project. So there has to be some ordinance changes for the city council to be able to approve this project, so, and that's all I have this evening.
Question on leftover, I'll call them leftover for nothing, unit numbers that they are not using in this phase. They get washed. They can't be sold to another phase or built later in another portion. So that decrease cannot come back.
That's right. And that's, that's, that's an important point. In a normal PUD, so when they, when you first approve a PUD, it's a big site, and it's all under one ownership. And so then they, they, you know, it's a six-unit, an acre across the whole site, but during the planning process, you know, it is clear that the units were scrunched up to the site, and all the other sites are much more, less dense, but overall, it meets a six-unit, an acre density. The property has since sold parcels, so now that it's not under a single ownership, if the developer doesn't build out their units, they don't, they just lose the rest of the units.
Thank you. Before we get into the process, at this point, is there any council comments, questions? We're going to hear from the developer next, so you can wait till then if we'd like, okay? Developer, if you'd like to make statements, appreciate it.
Mike Jaffe, I'm the applicant for Woodshire Brevard LLC. Wanted to point out one thing that you didn't mention. Going from 398 units and putting in the single-family of 72 units, the single-family component is taking up over 50% of the site. You know, it's taken over 17 acres for the single-family, and we're only building three condos at 85 feet, which is allowed, and the commercial component is allowed. Over a million dollars has been spent today on the demolition. We're taking out all the old streets, water lines, sewer lines. The site will be totally clean of all the old infrastructure. I want to share the hotel component, because I think that's going to be the jewel for Brevard County Satellite Beach for... Did you have the first slides? Those are hotel suites? Good-looking. That's the old housing. So what you're going to see in the hotel is Preferred Brand Hotel. It's, TripAdvisor has ranked Preferred Brand Hotels as the most excellent hotel brand worldwide. This is the Alphonse Hotel, which is a jewel hotel in Winter Park. We're modeling our hotel after this hotel. That's why I'm showing these slides. This hotel has a top wedding venue in central Florida. We're going to have the same courtyard garden of about 15,000 square feet. You know, just the material shots of the hotel, which will be similar to ours. Has a four-star restaurant, which will have a four-star restaurant. It has a lot of private meeting spaces in the promenade area of the hotel. That's the main lounge and bar area. That's one of the entrances into the hotel and to the restaurant. Will have a rooftop pool similar to this one for private parties and venues. This hotel is ranked as one of the top 20 hotels in the state of Florida. That's a meeting assembly area that's going to be similar to what we're going to be building.
Mike, what's your conference room size capability for an event?
We'll have about seating. It's about, right now, it's about 7,000 square feet, probably around 250 people for dinner, a little more for seminars. Then we have smaller, smaller meeting rooms, training rooms.
Patrick Air Force Base was very interested in the fact that they were going to do, that they want to do a convention area, because that's a struggle for them. Patrick is becoming one of the training centers of Florida in terms of, you know, their base use, uses at the base, and so that's why they use a lot of hotel rooms around the county, and they need training areas.
Patrick Air Force Base has, they put about 40,000 hotel room nights a year in excess of people into the community. We've had several meetings with Patrick Air Force Base and the command at the base with a strong, you know, telling us they have a strong need for an upscale hotel and meeting facilities.
I have a quick question. Do you feel like you're going to be catering more to the business side of it or more to the tourism side? It sounds more business, or what is...
We think it's going to be both. I mean, we had meetings with Space Action, Grumman, Harris, and Embraer, and they've all indicated that their high-end executives and clients are all going to Orlando to stay in four- and five-star hotels. They don't stay here. This will be the first four-star hotel in Brevard County. We don't have a four-star hotel. This will be a four-star, four-diamond hotel. This is the event lawn area that we're going to duplicate, about 15,000 square feet for weddings, and we've just had a strong support for a wedding venue. You don't have any wedding venue places?
Our Pelican Beach Clubhouse...
Please, excuse me, one second, please. Please be courteous to the speaker. Everybody will be when you get up here. The chatter back there is disturbing to both the speaker and the council. Thank you.
Just to give you an idea of the, you know, the issue with the, like, wedding venues, our Pelican Beach Clubhouse is rented, it's about two years now, or a year at least, a little over a year, a year and a half, in advance for weddings. And that's a 50 to 75-person, 70, yeah. Comfortably 50, but everybody crams about 150 in there every time they rent it.
Not very many.
Yeah. So convention space was one of the reasons why the council wanted us to pursue a hotel
That's the event lawn area that we're, will be duplicating. That's the entrance into the garden in the event area. The condo buildings will all have their own individual infinity pools on the roof.
And the three buildings will have the third floor going to the hotel, so that they can access the...
Correct. Each condo building will have a skyway connecting to the hotel. That's some sample range of the rooms. Back to the suites.
May I ask, the hotel chain is Preferred Brand Hotels?
Correct.
And is that they're officially going to be your hotel partner?
Yes.
That's not like a wish, that's a for sure?
Hotel Preferred Brands are not cookie-cutter hotels. They're all four- and five-star hotels. This will be a four-star hotel.
But they're already on board to be...
They are already on board and have the funding in place, yes.
Thank you.
Any questions for the applicant at this time?
I just had a quick question about the restaurants. Is it something that the hotel, has a restaurant, or do you bring in an outside restaurateur to come in and manage that separately? Do you know how they manage that part of it, or how they go about?
Sometimes it goes both ways. I think this hotel group will have a restaurant similar to Hamilton's, which is in the Alphonse Hotel. It'll be a four-star restaurant that they will manage and operate.
And is there going to be a rooftop bar, or...
There's a rooftop pool, bar, and a venue on the roof for events.
And will the public have access to that?
Yes, yes.
Facility?
Public has all the access to all the merch in the...
Sorry. That's all I had, thank you.
That's the most important thing?
Especially after this meeting.
After this meeting, yes.
Thank you.
Okay.
Any other speakers for...
Hello. Adam Faschbien with DFI, we're the builder and developers. I just wanted to let everybody know that my family is from this area. I was born here. Both my grandparents came to the area like a lot of other people. One, a jet propulsion engineer, the other one was a painter. Moved here for a GDC, started a business, and we still have that business in the family. Started the construction business 35 years ago, so the point is, yeah, my mother went to Satellite High, my wife grew up in Satellite Beach. So the point is that we're from here. We care very much about the area. We care about Satellite Beach, and all the decisions we've made so far have been to make a project that, you know, not only was financially viable, but really fit with, you know, the city, and that's what we tried to do. We care about the city and the project in this area, because we're from here, so. That's all I really wanted to let everybody know, you know, that's very important, so.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any more comment from the developer? Okay. At this time, bring it back to council before we start public comment. Any council comments on it? I'm going to start.
I have a lot, but I mean, I want to, like, hear other people first.
Hear the people first, okay.
I do have one quick question. So with the bed tax for the $500,000, are we required to spend that in a certain way, or is that something that just goes back and go into the general fund, or we could put into our reserves, or how does that have to work?
That's actually not ours. That goes to the Tourism Development Council. But those, that money funds, they're starting to do a lot of community projects with that money, so they're doing like Lori Wilson Park renovations with that money, and that, you know, having a hotel in the area would make us eligible to apply for park improvements with those, you know, so that's why I made that point of that. And then it also funds beachery nourishment as well.
So that would, that would be something that, like, for the ramp that said Hightower Beach going down to the beach, that, you know, tourist development tax would be able to help us with stuff like that when time comes that we need to replace those things.
Yeah.
Any further counsel? I'd like to open up for public. Okay, your order list, please.
On the site plan that's on the board up here, the three condo buildings are at 224 feet, and I'm not sure where this is going to go after tonight. Are you going to recommend, or are you voting on the 224 feet that's on the site plan?
We're just doing a conceptual plan.
Well, that's what's on the conceptual plan.
That's part of the conceptual plan.
That is what's on the conceptual plan. We had requested that the 200-foot width restriction would be struck out of the ordinance, so we can do the 224-foot long buildings, because we could build 17 buildings, we're only going to build three. So we're just looking at that as a concession.
Thank you.
Okay.
Do you want to speak on that?
Yes, if you'd like to now, sure.
Okay. Personally, I know that our planning advisory board recommended most of the approvals, yet striking, allowing to go more than 200 feet, and personally, I would be going with that.
See, I looked at, I actually looked at that, and you're only talking about a 50-foot easement between two buildings. It only affects the two buildings in the middle, because if you look at that plan up there, between the hotel and the first condo is way more than 50 feet, and between the last condo and the next building to the north of that is way more than 50 feet, it's probably 150. So the only two places where you're going to have a smaller breezeway are between the second and third condo. Is that right, Mike? You're going to have that, that is where the narrowest breezeway would be.
They're all 50 feet apart right now. The code states 25 feet, so we're double apart of what the code is.
From looking, from looking at those, it looks like your breezeway at the north end of, at the top north building, between that building and whatever is the development to the north, and between the first condo and the hotel, your breezeway is more, right?
Yes.
Okay. That's what I'm saying is, there's only two buildings that have a 50-foot breezeway. And to me, it really didn't make that much of a difference for those two buildings, because the breezeway between the other stuff was way greater than 50 feet. So I didn't really have a problem with the 224 for the type of development that you're looking at.
Right. Well, it makes a difference to us, because if we don't go, get to 224 feet, we're feet, we're going to lose twenty-one units. So, to replace the twenty-one units, we'll have to build a fourth building of forty-nine units to offset the economics of the, of the project.
And, you know, I look at it as we did the same thing when we approved the development that's across the street from Publix. That initially came in as more buildings. And we consolidated it down to less buildings, um, and it actually worked out to be a better project because you have a much bigger breezeway to over there now. I think what we're looking at here, I'd rather have three condos and one hotel than four condos and ten other condos. So, that's kind of where I am on this.
The, the requirements, eighty-five feet, two hundred feet width. If that were, if the two hundred foot width were to change, is it only for that sub-district? Or would it change for everything?
No, it's just for that one little zoning area. But that's what we're proposing. So, that's, so if they, if you approved that concept plan, we would change it for that little area.
Just that area.
Yeah.
If we had to build a fourth building to replace the twenty-one units that we would lose, we were going to reduce the single-family component of which we'd really like the single-family component of seventy-two units because it's a nice transition between our project and the townhouses next door.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And see, I look at it also as if he's building that additional building, we're going to have more density there. We're going to lose some single-family homes, but there's going to be more condos and we'll have more density. I'd rather not have the extra density.
What is the breezeway again? It should be twenty feet, twenty-five feet on the beach? What is the breezeway supposed to be in between buildings?
No, the breezeway is complicated, actually, on the beach. It, it's got, it's basically, um, a percentage of the lot width and stuff like that. So, it's a lot more complicated.
I know, I know. I'm just trying to relate it to something that we have something to relate because we don't have any condos on, not on the beach.
Yeah. And I look at the two plans, um, and again, if I lived in a perfect world, you've got to realize I've lived here all my life. So, most of the people in this room, you were not here. And so, I don't want to be the rude ones, say, God, it was nice back in nineteen sixty when there was nothing. But, um, if I had my perfect world, I, I don't like projects like this. But between the two choices I have, I really think the one we have before us suits the city better than what could possibly be there. I sure don't want seventeen. I remember this project extremely well. I was on council and we spent hours. I, I remember meeting with John Ferguson and stuff on how we came up with the setback on these buildings to get the height and so forth. We were given, we, we weren't given a clean sheet of paper for these projects. We were given the smallest part of this whole property to put the number of units to make this property go when we received it from the government. And we felt, I'll, I'll speak for myself, but I'm pretty sure I'm speaking for others that were on council then, that we would rather have it under our control than not have it under our control. And I know people saying, well, what's the cost of this? When we got this property from the US government, in order to do the project, we had to have police and fire already in place. So, for the last eighteen years, we've had police and fire waiting for project to start, be completed for the revenue. So, it wasn't that we had this choice of no, we'll bring them on when we need it. It was part of the agreement with the government on it. So, I'm more apt to something like this than the seventeen units. Um, it fills a void in the hotel whether you like hotels or not like hotels. We did have it here on the beach. Um, we did take a lot of taxable property, you have to realize, off the beach. And we took forty percent of the highest taxable property that gave us revenue. So, we're limited. This is our payback for all the years that we did it. And again, if I had my choice, I'd buy every piece of property. But you have to realize when we were buying the pieces of property across the street from there, everybody says, oh, the turtles. That was one of our main pieces of property we wanted to buy. And at that time, the way it worked was you had to have an appraisal. We went and got grants. You had an appraisal from the real estate end, then you had an appraisal from the state or whoever was doing the grants. Well, at that time, the appraisal of the property from the real estate end was so much greater than what the state agency said they were willing to pay for the property. And so, we worked hard to get this piece of property that stretches, probably the longest single stretch that I know of on, on the beach, probably the county there. So, we did make that effort there and we did have to squish in the remaining units that the government was not using on the south side. If you look at the plot, the south side's bigger than the north side. But we had to get the density. They needed that number to make the project work. So, you know, not a pure world. I think we've worked hard on this over the years. And, uh, if I have the two to choose from, I don't have zero to choose from. I have two to choose from. I don't want seventeen buildings. I just don't see where that is a benefit to our community. Can a hotel be a benefit to our computer, community? We don't have one. A lot of people have contemplated, it'd be nice to have something to put people in. Is it the less of too evil? I'm not really sure. Single-family homes and so forth. And let me give you one little thing on impact since I have a history of being here. There was more, there was as much traffic between nineteen sixty-five and seventy-five on A1A. It was the height of the space program. It was bumper to bumper every morning. Satellite High School graduating classes from sixty-five to seventy-six were incredibly higher than they are now. You know what I mean? There's another elementary school on base. Satellite High School seventy-one, six hundred and eighty. I think seventy-six was the highest, seven hundred and ten. You want to know what the high school graduating, I think Mark went last year, I went the year before, year before was three twenty-eight, three fifteen last year.
Yep.
So, you've got to remember those areas there was single-family homes with at least four people per home. There's almost four thousand more people in that area that made up Patrick Air Force Base. And you look at the schools today, that's three fifteen. I mean, look at it, there, it was a lot more impact on that area. Not only the impact there, but the impact environmentally. And that's where I like this PUDI came in. There was no stormwater. There was none of that. It just flowed into the river. And at least here, and again, when you put the stormwater ponds and so forth, you cut out land that you could put a house on it. I'm more interested in the stormwater, making the river clean. I make my living there. The project like this gives us a fresh start. No. That was a good one. Thank you. Um, I, I, I think the environment just gives us a clean slate because you've got to realize in our city that we're agent. Here's a play, a way that developer is going to put in the roads, the stormwater, all that that we don't have to put in. And in most cases, it lasts us forty and fifty years if it's done right and it's good material. So, we're getting a piece of our city and tax revenue to come into us that we're going to have little going out in these places. So, uh, it's not a perfect world, but I, this is better than I think the seventeen. That's my opinion, so. If it's council permission, um, open it up and then bring it back?
Yep.
Okay, at this time, there's a list, Gwen. Let's be citizens first. If you would call them off, we'll call the first person and the second, so you'll be ready. You have three minutes.
Charlie Graham to be followed by Tom Bergen.
Charlie Graham, four oh nine IBIS. Um, some of these, I have questions that have already been answered, but I'm just going to read what I wrote and we'll go with that. The Pineda Railroad Overpass, safer and more efficient daily commutes and hurricane evacuations. Dual water mains being installed on the Pineda by Melbourne and Cocoa Water Departments, providing redundancy in our freshwater supply. The Soto Storm Water Runoff Project, including the pond and park, less flooding for our streets and lawns. Artificial reef installation allowing beach re-nourishment on the beach after almost three decades, protecting structures and expanding recreation on the beach. The Biggie Grand Canal Muck Removal Project, enough said. Although not solely responsible for these projects, you do deserve credit for diligently fumbling through on your part on these environmental improvements in our area. Reference ten twenty-four. After conversing with quite a few neighbors on social media, three groups of thought involved. Do nothing with the property and turn it into a park. So that all understand the property ocean side of the eastern side of A1A is a preserve. However, it has nothing to do with the parcel under, under discussion. Issues with the park concept. Let's start with the buyout required of the private property owner. The buyer paid thirteen point five million dollars plus the million dollars to clean up so far. To simply pay cost, that comes down to approximately thirteen hundred dollars for every man, woman, and child in Satellite Beach. Does anyone here think that every family of four in Satellite Beach would want to pay fifty, pay a fifty-two hundred dollar bill for a construction site? So, assume it is bought and a million dollars cleans it up, you still would have maintenance costs and perpetuity. It's not feasible. Next. I don't want a four-star hotel. And I quote from one person. There are plenty of hotels a short while away. Baloney, as the man mentioned. Now, according to Google, the two closest four-star hotels are the Hilton and Cocoa Beach. It's twenty-two minutes away. To the south, there's a Bed and Breakfast that's eighteen miles away. But for a real four-star hotel, you have to drive to Vero Beach. Having a four-star hotel would be a huge plus for our community. I know my parents from up north who snowbird four months a year would love it. Uh, they always lament that there's not a nice hotel nearby that they can, can stay at and see their grandkids. Jobs, although not high-paying aerospace jobs, there will be jobs for our area. I know my first job was a busboy at a Hilton. Real good money for a high school kid. Eco-tourism, as some of you know, starting in twenty twenty-two, Tuukuk will be flying direct from seven to eight cities in England and Scotland to Melbourne. These are on seven to eighty-seven wide-body jets. You may or may not know eco-tourism is quite large in the UK. Those kind of guests that protect the environment and even donate to worthy causes. And finally, can infrastructure support the development? I say the history of the city is pretty good. However, wastewater and freshwater issues have been a problem. Not necessarily fault of the city, but problems nonetheless. To remedy this, I have a suggestion. I read that the impact fees were two million dollars. I would propose that the city commit earmarking twenty-five percent of the impact fees that they get, because obviously it goes to stormwater or whatever, for stormwater, for sewer, for forced water. That way, I think you'll alleviate a lot of, of, of issues. All right, please vote. Um, one last thing. I'd like to mention that most of the audience believe the science of global warming and its effect on sea level rise. The debt spend about three billion dollars a year keeping the sea at bay. The estimated one point six million dollars of taxes collected annually from the view to the city, to the city should help this community remain safe for quite a while. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, um, thank you.
Tom Bergen's not here.
Tom's not here, okay.
The next would be Alan Dillon, but I believe you spoke earlier, so I don't know if you wanted to speak on this item as well.
Alan, do you want to speak on this item also?
Sure.
Do you want to speak on this one?
Who's next? Alan Dillon, six seventy Kenwood Court, Satellite Beach. Uh, I have a couple of questions. Is, uh, obviously Charlie just hit on it, the stormwater is my biggest, my biggest issue. I'm concerned about, and this is just for you all to digest here, I'm concerned about the facing and the lighting from behind the hotel or along A1A, which we know that should be taken care of with the regulations. Let me see. My, probably the biggest concern I have at this point is we have a lot of traffic on not only A1A but South Patrick currently without the development. So, I want to know that we are taking and going ahead and put in some monitoring of what the traffic is now and then look at it, what it becomes after this development and see where we're at. And then the DOT is going to have to come in and do something with the roads because I have trouble getting out of my street going south on South Patrick. And I know a lot of other people have the same problem, trying to negotiate the traffic, especially in busy times. And I have to agree, the agreement with the Ramada Inn, I, I want to commend everybody. Everything that has been set up here tonight has been true. I've been here. I've been in this county for sixty-two years. I've been to Satellite Beach for twenty-two years. I was part of this stuff when we started approving it. I was one of the voters. Uh, I know that everybody here is passionate about what's going on. I, in a perfect world, if it's my word, we wouldn't develop east of A1A back in the sixties. I didn't want it to happen, but it did. And you're seeing what's happening now. We're trying to do some construction and some development that is hopefully going to be better. And certainly, the stormwater issue that I, I get on is very important to me. So, anyway, thank you. I'll get out of here and listen to somebody else talk.
Okay. It's Fred, Fred Frandy and then followed, to be followed by Diane Douglas.
Evening, everybody. Fred Frandle, four oh five Point Level Drive, Satellite Beach. Uh, I think my main concern that I've come with is the traffic. I don't see where that entrance is for that community's position on Shearwater. What happens seven, ten years down the road, the Air Force Base decides to develop on the southern part of Shearwater, the traffic there is just going to be a nightmare. So, that's my biggest concern. If that entrance to the, to the site was a little farther to the north of their property, it might make life a lot better for everybody in that area. But that's my biggest concern. I'd rather see the seventeen if that's where that entrance is going to be. I'd rather see seventeen because you're going to increase the units, which is going to increase the traffic. So, you've got to consider what is, the Air Force Base going to do with the south side when you start looking at traffic? Like you said earlier, you don't know what they're going to develop. Or if they are or not, it could be empty or they may develop. So, that's my thing.
Thank you. And to your questions, I know Courtney's writing them down.
Yes.
And at the end, we'll answer them all.
All right.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Diane Douglas to be followed by Matt Fleming.
Diane Douglas, I don't have a question. But, um, on the lighting that we were talking about, and I know Nick Sanzone was all about trying to get the lighting of a different color so that it's not so bright. So, I just wanted to bring up, if it's possible now, if you're going, if this goes through, then the lighting to do it so that it's bright for our eyes but doesn't interfere with, you know, the birds and all that stuff. So, if we can get that to start with and not be hindsight and do it foresight, that would be good. Um, I don't, thanks.
Thank you.
Matt Fleming to be followed by Catherine Vecchio.
Matt Fleming, seventeen seventy-seven A1A. Let's dispel the illusion. What was presented by the city was contradictory, incorrect on fact and law, and convoluted beyond belief. In this case, they are proposing zoning changes to fit a concept plan. The developer should be changing the concept plan to fit the existing zoning, specifically the six units per acre mandated by the city, the thirty-five-foot height restriction for the west, the west side of A1A, which was set by residents in two thousand and six. Acting like the old zoning is grandfathered in is a joke. The whole point of grandfather clauses is that they are not transferable. Under these proposed zoning changes, if passed, there is nothing to restrict the developer from coming back with a new plan and building as many as six hundred and eighteen units. Let's be clear. What we are seeing in this city is a massive billion-dollar boondoggle unfolding. Beach widening, this development, and height increases along the west side of A1A should not be taken in isolation. They are concurrent and very much connected. The reality is that the city has broken its own rules many times before, and they are proposing to do the same now. If you pass a new zoning rubric, it must conform to the current city charter. The Burt Harris Act, according to the Florida Bar, says this. As for now, the trend in the appellate courts appears to be conservative and results in favorable rulings for local government entities cautioning landowners. In addition to this, there has been no environmental impact study to the adjacent conservation lands. The money coming in from this development is a pittance and does nothing to offset the millions of dollars the city has already spent and borrowed to accommodate it. Nourishment reduced turtle nesting by fifty percent each time it was done. The rest of the county's numbers remained stable. So, we shouldn't take it seriously when they say they're trying to protect the sea turtle. So we shouldn't take it seriously when they say they're trying to protect the sea turtles. They've been going around telling everybody, everything's fine. The residents overwhelmingly oppose this strategy and are prepared to fight to save this town from what has been egregiously derelict leadership. What we are being told about having a choice, no choice, is a blatant lie. This city admin has been running this city since 2012, and their primary object has been to advance this pro-development agenda. They have lied, misled, attacked, and threatened residents. They are being sued by an employee of 20 years, the city clerk, for being wrongfully terminated. They coordinated with the county and others to dismiss contamination concerns as coming from household products. Meanwhile, we now have a federal cleanup designation for the dump that was being discussed at the time. They did a phase-two testing on this development 20 years ago and have still refused to do new testing, or to ask the state to do new testing, or to require the developer to do new testing for emerging contaminants and many other things that were not tested for back then. What kind of a town throws an ocean, beach, and reef festival while you guys are working to bury the damn reef?
Matt, thank you. Thank you.
Mayor, can I just comment?
Please.
Literally, everything he just said is untrue. There is not one thing he said that was true. I just have to be...
Matt, say it again.
Everything he said was untrue.
Mandy?
We don't want to have defamation talks here.
Courtney, any response? We'll take it later when we do a walk.
There is no violation. They're not asking for a height or density change. It's not.
Matt, this is not a back-and-forth. Point of order. No, you're done off the podium. She's answering it.
Point of order.
No, sir.
You know what that means.
The city has not borrowed any money or spent any...
One more. Excuse me. She will talk. She can answer the question. Sir, Matt, thank you for interrupting. Please leave. Thank you. She can speak.
Point of order. She can speak.
Thank you. Okay, appreciate it.
Is this okay?
Yeah.
The city has not borrowed or spent any money on this project, so, and there's no way the city can increase any units on this property. The city is not increasing any units now with this application. A hotel is not considered a residential unit. It's considered commercial. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's it.
Sorry. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Catherine Vecchio, 179 Montecito. I'm a property owner there. I want to thank everything that Satellite Beach does, but as a resident, started back in 1986, and I've left and come back, and I'm pretty, I'm pretty much a full-time volunteer, and I help a lot of different groups, but, so I was really shocked to hear that the other residents are still reporting that Satellite Beach still discharges in from rainwater runoff into our canal system. And I always applaud what Satellite Beach does, but, so first of all, I was kind of surprised to hear that. As a volunteer for the shoreboard monitoring program that is sponsored by Florida Wildlife Commission, I have watched over the last four years the population of seabirds and shorebirds increase on High Tower Beach. And I was hopeful with, even though I was kind of on the fence about beach renourishment, what I was seeing was an opportunity, what looked like a rack-line opportunity for growth. So I was going to approach the city about trying to do a pilot program with FWC. Well, then the hurricane came through. And then now, when I talk about, when I hear about the view from my property in Montecito, that view will now be distorted, whether Mike Jaffe, which I was very surprised that he became the property owner when he was a seller, and I really felt like he was going to be representing and not coming up and saying to us, well, you're either 17 buildings or you give me this. That's kind of like a threat. You know, we're going to accommodate his 17 buildings, or accommodate this, or he's going to give us 17 buildings. I just feel like, long-term, that we're always trying to fix things after the fact, and I feel like this is, you know, not that I don't agree with everything that Fleming has said and others have said, but it does bring some awareness to things in the community that at some point it has to stop. You know, we don't have much more land to develop. And in the article today in Florida Today about the Forever Florida Lands, how? Why couldn't this be for a part of the Forever Florida Lands, some piece of this? I mean, really, will the Air Force Base not develop that land in 30 years? We don't know that. You keep referring to this, if we change the structure of whether it's how many units or spacing, will that affect another portion? I'm lost in that, because are you telling me that that portion is the portion that's across the street, the south side, the 30-year, that was supposed to be the Enchanted Forest? That that didn't come to fruition? And it also, I mean, the layout that was provided to us through the Montecito, and I still have it, and that's what it was being called, and it was the south side. But also, Florida Today pitched this property on the north side, that it was supposed to be these multimillion-dollar, large-scale homes. So everybody got all excited, finally, we get a buyer who's going to take up all this land, it's going to have a reduced impact because of low population. But now he's saying, okay, well, I could give you 17 buildings. But when I went through there and I started adding up, 150-seat restaurant, plus 40 employees, and then you start breaking it down, well, anyway, I just feel like the amount of people, of 850 people, whether or not that those units could then accommodate families of three or four, we're looking at a lot of people on that property. And I, again, I commend everything that Satellite Beach is doing, but I just am very disappointed that we are going to be losing even more natural space.
Thank you.
Okay, Ron Jagudis, to be followed by Dale Abrams.
Ron Jagudis, Satellite Beach. I did not attend the PAB meeting, but Dale attended. What I'm concerned about is, we have this one meeting here, Mr. Mayor, and basically, we have, I think we have a communication problem and a shortsightedness of making a decision in one night. And that's up to y'all to decide. Y'all have time to work through this. I know people have worked diligently on this, but when I went to Monaco today and started looking at some of the requirements as far as doing things, in fact, I started this weekend, and as a citizen, I, we all pay taxes and we are all into our careers or whatever else we do, to get up to speed is very difficult, all right, for us citizens. And I think if some of this information would have been a little more concretely presented, such as the 85-foot height that can be done there, seven buildings versus three buildings versus two, whatever it is, if we had that opportunity to see this and the follow-up prior to this meeting, and maybe the details got to be written better, maybe we could come up here and speak more intelligently as citizens, or come up with ideas to make this better. I know you all are working on this, but, for instance, I got lost with the height restriction, and I know I brought it up in a town hall meeting that they can do, and I've discussed this with Courtney in public, 85 feet. I didn't know that the whole area could be done by 85 feet, the whole area. We have restrictions there as far as how many units can be there, and maybe several condos would make up the difference rather than having residential. So that's all I'm asking. The hotel, there's more clarification here. I'm concerned now, what I heard tonight even further, and this is a concern, maybe I'm wrong, since there's going to be a walkway through all three hotels to the, rather through the condominiums on the third floor to the hotel. I can understand that, but is there going to be investment property there where there are going to be rentals and/or timeshares? I don't know that. It's probably not going to be under the guise of timeshares, but I'm just trying to ensure certain things. That's all I'm asking, is, but let's make it a little clearer so that everyone can understand this. And maybe I'm making a wrong assumption. The developer sounds like they're sincere on what they want to do.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Dale Abrams, to be followed by John Fergus.
Dale Abrams, CRA resident. Question, is Shearwater private or public roadway? The other thing is, I was at the PAB meeting, and I asked about retention, okay? I don't think there is any retention ponds on the 27 acres. What I did learn was there's six ponds on PUD 1 and 2, okay? So the question is, why isn't there any retention ponds? Because you talked a lot about retention ponds, Courtney, on the 27 acres. Or are we going to connect from the 27 acres into retention ponds on PUD 2? And they're all named, 1, 2, and 3. Am I correct? Is that what you call them? Yeah, all right. Are they going to do a connection, okay? If that's the case, then maybe I don't understand something here. Courtney has said that you have to have a certain percentage of retention in new building, new construction. So I'm a little confused about that. And then the other thing is, do we have the proper amount of green space? Okay? That's another thing that needs to be thought about. I don't know. The PAB board, I thought they said 200 feet, but, you know, you're saying differently. And I was at that meeting. I thought they reduced the length from 224 to 200. Is that correct? But that's not what you want to do tonight. You want to bring it back to 224, according to what?
We haven't voted on anything.
But is that what...
That's the applicant's...
That's what the applicant wants to do? Okay.
John Fergus, to be followed by Daniel Willman.
John Fergus, 135 Maple. Bottom line up top. I fully support what they're proposing. I helped write that PUD ordinance. I tracked this from that time on. This certainly is better than we would have had under the original design. I recall lots of people in this building, in this room, in the past, saying they really would like to have a hotel after '04. We're getting one. We're not getting a fly-by-night roof-in or something like that. We're getting a reasonably nice hotel. I'm not a real fan of the passenger walkway across the A1A. I did a check, there is one between the port and Fort Pierce, 72 miles of A1A, and that's the one south of, which isn't used very much, it's very inconvenient. But I kind of understand with the connections, the third story, how this might work. I don't know how people think that tonight, the city can tell the developer, no, we don't want you to do this, we don't want 85 feet, we don't want this, we don't want that. That was set over a decade ago. They're reducing the density, they're reducing the impact, most of the buildings. They're certainly making a nice upscale development. I think it'll bring in a little more taxes than it did when it was in its former state. And again, I guess I'd just say, I fully support it, and those folks that don't understand, I do want to say to the public, I spent time before, after I knew it had been sold, talking to the folks in City Hall to answer questions. And yesterday, I spent some time on the phone with Carl. He answered my questions and satisfied me. If you wait until the meeting to ask the questions and to say you want to see something changed, it is way too late. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Dan Willman, to be followed by Patrick McCarron.
Dan Willman, Carriage Park. I was going to address a few different issues here tonight, but some of them have already been addressed by previous speakers. My biggest issue with this going forward is, I was here for the PAB meeting, and I asked blatantly the board, the developers, and the building and zoning guy, I forget his name, the new guy, whether or not there is a contingency plan in place should anything be dug up on this property. And by dug up, I'm talking about material, bombs, jeeps, airplane parts, barrels of god-knows-what. This property borders the FUD site on the northern border. It literally borders the FUD site, and I've got reports of buried airplane parts and jeeps and stuff well outside of the FUD site. One of these reports is actually 340 meters away from the PUD 3. Airplane parts buried in the ground 340 meters from the PUD 3. Now, I've also heard this evening that you guys did more testing, or convinced the developer maybe to do more testing, I don't know how the process went for that, but I did hear the number, 136, was I correct on that? 136? That's the highest number we've seen in Satellite Beach. In Satellite Beach, yeah. All the previous testing that was done was done around that area. And that's concerning to me, because these red lines marked on this chart, they're also marked on the EPA's Epic Study, this is a historic drainage trench leading from that dump site directly through the PUD 3. Big concern of mine, we need to make sure that this isn't going to end up as another South Patrick shores. And to address one of the things that Matt said, the previous city clerk is, in fact, suing you guys for wrongful termination. Thank you.
Patrick McCarron, to be followed by Mary Ann Sinclair.
Patrick McCarron, I live at 1045 Highway A1A. I'm in the new Oceana Development. I'm here in supporting your concept. We moved here, although we've been Florida residents for almost 25 years, we moved here several months to make this our home, and we are really pleased with the concept we're seeing. We've come from parts of Florida where, as we've all been chased by developers and chased to buy them, and sometimes chased after them, we've seen a good balance of what we see in this Satellite Beach leadership here. We've especially enjoyed, after the concept stage, how you're building zones, you know, we called as new buyers, that building department was, you know, tells us how the department was, the building was progressing, they protected the environment, they spoke to us very openly about issues and concerns. And I would say here in voting for this concept, which has the mix of property and usage I think you're looking for for the long-term development and will enjoy, the key details are going to come as we follow up with all the zoning engineering, all the requirements, which, you know, you've shown a diligence in doing. So I want to thank you for the foresight, especially the concept of the hotel, to improve the amenities in the Satellite Beach area, and just want to thank you for your openness and the presentation you put on tonight. So thank you.
Thank you.
Mary Ann Sinclair, to be followed by Shannon Mueller.
Hello, hello. Have I got it fixed right? Back in 1954...
And please state your name.
Pardon me?
Your name, please.
Oh, Mary, oh, that's right. Mary Ann Sinclair, 127 Ocean Spray Avenue. Back in 1954, my father was stationed at Patrick. I was in college then, and after college and marriage, I talked to my husband into coming to Satellite Beach. He worked for Pan Am at the base. We wanted small-town life. We had a chance, like to go to New York City. No, we wanted small-town life. And over the years, you've lost it for us. You've left too many businesses, too many condos and all, and the traffic on the roads and all. At 83, I don't want to be driving in traffic like... At 83, I don't want to be driving in traffic like Vieira or Palm Bay. Keep it small. Let's keep that area, instead of hotel and condo, single-family homes, please. And remember, small-town life is great. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, that was the end of the residents.
Okay. I have to go to the next.
So, the non-residents... Oh, I'm sorry.
So, I'm just going to try, I don't like speaking in public, but just a couple of questions. As far as traffic goes, I know one of the concerns is all the cars, and then also, like we, oh, I'm sorry, I live at 425 Nautilus, and we own a property on Casia. So, golf carts is a big thing, we have one. Is there any possibility of putting a path in from the new development to the rest of Satellite Beach? Because right now, it's kind of dangerous, Montecito, and those people can't get through. Sorry. Another thing is, as far as the condos, I don't know if it's possible to switch it back, doesn't sound like it, but it would be so great, just as she said, to be single-family. I think there's a lot of money to make there still, and it would just keep the dynamic here as a family town. I don't like South Florida, I don't like Clearwater, I love Sanibel and Jekyll Island, they're sanctuary islands, and, you know, we already have people being hit by cars here. And I know you guys are doing a lot of work to try and fix that, but I'm afraid that we're going to widen the roads, my kids ride bikes, and I just want to keep it safe and small and sweet for my kids and my family. And that's basically it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That was the end of the residents.
That was the end of residents?
Residents, yeah.
Okay, we go to non-residents?
Okay, so, Bill Lundell to be followed by Sandra Sullivan. What's his name?
Good evening. Good evening, council. Thank you. My name's Bill Lundell, I live at 170 Christie Drive in Indian River Beach, Sister City. I'm a retired City of Melbourne Utilities employee. I worked three and a half years from 1986 to 89 in the Melbourne Sewer Department, and I worked 21 years or so and 18 or so from here at Beachside, I was your meter reader, as well as other things. But I want to focus on the sewer. I worked, and back then, I didn't have cell phones, remember, we did not have cell phones. Everything that I saw, and I could witness, and I can verify, working on the line crews, the lateral and sewer mains, as well as force mains and storm drains. At times, there were occasions when we were digging and replacing a main, and we would hit a dead lateral, a dead lateral would be an abandoned house or something. This is over in Melbourne. And all of a sudden, a mother rat and her babies would come popping out of the backhoe that pulled the lateral out. And I was a young man, and I could get out of the ditch, I couldn't do it anymore. But my point is, I'm going up to 2019, and I'm talking about the utilities and everything that's going to be taken out, and I was listening to the developer. I have seen before developers, and I'm not saying this now, but developers who abandoned sewer and water lines. And I had the opportunity, and I worked over here from 1995 to 2010, reading meters and etc. And I had the ability to watch the community of Montecito being built from the ground up. And I remember distinctly all the new water lines being put in. Now, my point is, what's going on in North Basin? I'm against any of this development, I think we should have more open area. But my point is, in tearing up the old sewer lines, you are displacing a lot of rats and displacing them. Where are they going to go? I'm being distracted. The point is, where are they going to go? And the thing about rats is, it's basic knowledge that we have an infestation here on the Beachside. It's documented, and it's well-known that we have an infestation of rats, amongst other rodents, but I'm focusing on rats because everybody knows about rats. And my point is, you tear them up, those rats are going to go somewhere. And all of these surrounding communities are going to be affected. Rats can multiply, you know rats can multiply within the first year. And they also carry diseases. And my point is, any more development, the neighbors underground, because rats, and I figured this out myself, and I've seen it enough, rats use old sewer lines and storm drains as condos. And that is how they live, and I know it's uncomfortable, but, and also, one other thing, I'm thinking about the children here. And I worked from South Patrick Shores to Melbourne Beach for almost 18, 20...
So, to wrap, start wrapping up your three-minute buzzer.
Okay. And so, I just want to make sure that, I'm thinking about the children, and I know a lot about the utilities here. I'm thinking about the children who are dying of cancer. And is it worth putting a few more dollars in your pocket until you get answers from the rats and from all of that is being done there, the utilities taking out? Something is going to happen. And remember, rats need a food source. There's a lot around there.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay, Sandra Sullivan to be followed by Lori Logue.
Oh, my gosh. Sandra Sullivan, South Patrick Shores. So, the first thing is, the Wildlife Preserve. So, the FTC Preserve application intended moderate use by visitors to beach wasn't intended for high-density. You guys were negotiating that grant process while you were negotiating the property across the street. I have a document from the University of Central Florida with a comparison between the Hilton-Radisson area and Hightower. The preserve is doing what it intended to do, and the quantitative numbers in this document make a point. The density development impacts negativity, turtle nesting. A high-density hotel is incongruent with a preserve. So, I would suggest since you used UCF to get the grants back in between 98 and 2001, that you have UCF do an impact study. The next thing I would like to do is put on record the emails that I have from DEP, because they're the enforcement body for your agreements, and put on record their concerns that have been written to the City of Satellite Beach with this agreement not being met. I also, the second subject I want to talk about is this misleading the public with this saying that they could do 17 towers. That is a falsehood. And the PUD, the 2004 document that approved the concept plan said that it was only allowed to have three towers to 85 feet. The rest was townhomes. So, it had a cap of 398 units. It also said that the number of units that are not single-family or townhomes could only be a total of 419 units in that document in 2004, the concept plan that you approved. I attended the zoning meeting, they specifically did not approve the widening from the 200 feet. There was, I expressed issues with the green space, the maximum lot coverage is 60%. The perimeter setback is 30 feet plus one foot over 25 feet tall, that doesn't seem to be there. 2.5 units per off-street parking. We all objected to the removal of the limitation of seven stories, but they did it anyway, but there's no mention of that in the minutes. And the next point I want to bring up is the PUD. I'm almost done, because normally, we got five minutes, and you reduce it to three. I have one last point to make, I'll sum it up in one minute. The PUD in 2017, April 2017, ordinance 1135, said that, said that this hotel could only be 35 feet, that it was under the current charter. The modification to add multi-use is under the charter. And it also said that it had to keep the residential character of the PUD and shall be designated to primarily serve the needs of residents of the PUD in which they're located.
Thank you, Sandra.
The council, the zoning did not remove that from the thing.
Thank you, Sandra.
And last thing, I have to give you these documents.
Please turn it to the city clerk.
Right, I'm bringing them right now, just one second.
Thank you.
One second. So, this is the DEP letter. I also have 22,000 petitions from Florida. We would like to request that the PUD go to referendum, as well as the hotel per the ordinance in 2017. And we would like the PUD to go to referendum.
Thank you, Sandra.
Because of these petitions.
Thank you.
This is the DEP letter. This is the petition. And this is the letter from the University of Central Florida.
That's it, thank you. Who's the next speaker?
Lori Logue to be followed by Sarah Leon.
I'm Lori Logue, I live on Neptun, North Neptun. I'm skeptical, but I'm open-minded, and I just have a couple of questions for Courtney. On the south side of Shearwater, that area that the Air Force Base you said has 30 years, what's the beginning timeframe of that 30 years?
It was actually, do you mind if I enter it? It was actually a 50-year agreement, and that started back, you know...
So, we have 30 years from now.
Right, so, it's 30 years, about around 30 years from now.
Okay.
I have all the, it took us about a year to figure out what was going on with that property.
Alright, so, they still have 30 years.
Yeah, they have. So, basically, it's owned by a private property owner, but the military could trigger military housing on that property at any time.
Right. Got it. Okay. I know that 85-foot height elevation for the west side of A1A, would that include any property west of A1A? So, okay, it's just this one. Because I'm thinking, boy, that's a stimuli for everybody else in their old shopping centers to sell out and build more condos. Okay? And my only other concern that I'm skeptical about is, you have that nice bridgeway over A1A to the beach, and it's a nice four-star hotel. So, are we going to have lawn chairs and, you know, jet skis out there for rent because that's something that the hotel clientele is going to demand? And what will that do to the beach? Those are my, those are my only real concerns at this point. Yeah. It's up to you.
Yeah. Anybody left?
Yeah, Sarah Leon to be followed by Peg Heinley, that's the last speaker.
Thank you. Thank you. Then sign up, thank you. We'll give them time, she stopped there, I'll have her after Pat. Thank you.
Peg. Peg Heinley, Sandpapper Drive, Satellite Beach. That's the other. That's the other. I just have a couple of specific questions, but also, I just wanted to, I keep, you know, hearing a lot of similar things over and over again. I've lived here for far more years than I care to count, nearly 50 now. And small is great, small is great, you know, having a small town is wonderful. But I don't, in my entire life, the city has not been much bigger than it is now, if any bigger. Like, I mean, when it was, what I'm trying to say is, it has always been about the same. Satellite, you're, I completely agree with you, Mr. Dino, the satellite classes that we had were huge, the elementary schools were huge, I went to Holy Name, our classes were huge, far, far bigger than they are now, and the traffic has never been any, you know, greater than it is about now. I'm all for small-town, but I'm also for progress. And taxes must go up if progress is going to happen. If you want infrastructure improvements, where is that money going to come from? Because our property values are already, you know, high. I wonder how long that can last, but getting higher and, but not high enough to sustain the infrastructure needs of a 60-year-old city. So, I, I'm not really loving this plan. I don't love the idea of three huge condos, I don't love the idea of 85 feet, but I understand the position that we're in. If we could go back in time and change that height restriction, I would absolutely, you know, have been a part of that and, and maybe not done that. I don't love the comment of, you know, don't approve the width we want, and we'll just give you more of what you don't want. That did seem a little, you know, gun in hand, that was not, that wasn't great. But I do have a couple of specific questions for either Courtney or the builder. Is the hotel a bill-to-suit? Is there a, is there a buyer or a hotel specific in mind? And how does that work? Will the builder retain ownership over the hotel? Does the hotel, whoever that ends up being, Rosin or, you know, a brand-name hotel, how does that ownership work? And what impact do they have on the building and the maintenance of the building? And who is responsible for the maintenance of the crossovers and the entry and exit points? But lastly, along with that, is where does that crossover on the east side exit? And who maintains that? I mean, we've all seen many hurricanes come through here, and the first thing gone is the side of stucco walls, and then you have inside of that, you know, cigarette butts and beer cans and all of that. So, who, the hotel side, those are my main questions, is who's going to maintain that when the, when the, when the sell-out is done and all that?
Thank you. Okay, that was the last public sign-up? Okay, thank you. At this time, I'm going to close the public hearing and bring it back to council for discussion. Courtney, I know you have a list of questions there.
Do you want me to answer them first? Do you want me to answer them first?
Yes, let's do that.
So, we had a question on whether or not we can...
A gal said that anybody who wasn't able to get to the sign-up sheet would be allowed to talk anyhow, that there would be an invitation for those who didn't get to sign up. The gal in the red. Are there people still waiting to speak but didn't get a chance to get to the sign-up?
Sir, I know, we had a sheet so that we would keep it orderly, so...
You made that statement, I was just going to...
Sir, wait, do you want to speak?
No, I don't.
Okay, thank you. If there's no one else who is going to speak, I will close it. You have one chance to speak, no ma'am, once, sorry. That's a portal order here, it's one three-minute, is how, how it works. Anybody else? Five minutes on citizens' comments on non-agenda items. For agenda items, it's three, it's in our procedures. If anybody would like to see them, that we do have them here. You would like to speak, sir?
I just have something real quick.
Real quick, sir, please.
My name's Tyler Kelsey, I live at 827 Point's Head Drive. I think, as the previous speaker stated, that growth is inevitable, you know, income for the city is inevitable. You guys need the money to fund public projects, everything like that. So, my only concern is, is once you do let the developer build, as she touched on, is how do you maintain and keep the hotel within its limits across from a preserve that you guys have all worked so hard to, to preserve? Because I worked at the Hilton, and I was, as two speakers stated, I did the beach rentals. So, that's, that really is a great point. And whenever you have a crosswalk for like 600 or how many people, for any, if it's all full, you know, 400 to 600 people, and you have a crosswalk to a preserve, I mean, that just, it just seems like it's going to be destroyed with, as you said, cigarettes, beer cans, and everything of that nature. And then, next thing you know, that, that all those people are going to want each chairs, and then it just keeps going from there. and then it just keeps going from there. So my only concern is, is it's going to get approved, I mean, I think we all know that, and, and that's, I guess that's, that's inevitable, as I said. But how, how do we make sure that we can maintain the integrity of this project, make sure it's a four-star hotel? I worked at the Hilton. It is not that great of a hotel, I don't really think it's, it's four-star, it's not really worth it. So if we really do have a four-star hotel, then, then that can be beneficial to the community, an actual four-star restaurant, that could also be beneficial. And then maintaining the integrity of the nature preserve across from it. And I think as long as we did that, the citizens would, you know, we'd be a lot more comfortable with, with passing this through. So I would just ask that the council, mayor, you guys just keep us informed, and maybe, I don't know how much control we have over the maintenance of that hotel, but I've seen what tourists do, and I don't, you know, whether you're from Kansas, Washington, or the UK, you just don't have the same appreciation of this area as all of us locals do, so that's all I have to say.
Thank you for talking. Okay. I'll bring it back to council at this point. One, one thing real quick on the beach parking across there and so forth, we're limited already. We can't expand that parking lot there. Part of the agreement when we acquired this land was, that's the size of it. And so that's why you don't see it bigger than it is. One of the reasons you don't see it bigger than it is. Courtney?
Okay, so I've got a lot of good input, and I think I, I just tried to write down the questions, not opinions, just the actual questions. So the idea of adding twenty-five percent of the impact fees to utilities, actually, part of those impact fees are utilities. So there's an impact fee to water, and then there's an impact fee to sewer, and that's calculated as part of their impact fee total. So they, they do pay a portion to both sewer and, and water already. The idea of lighting recommendations that are kind of like dark sky recommendations is what I think Diane was trying to talk about, and some of our sustainability board members were discussing that, and I think that's a great idea. And so some of those, you know, we'll be talking through lighting in the engineering phase of that project. And developers, from what I understand, at this point have been pretty conciliatory towards any request for turtle, you know, lighting items from, from the city. The traffic on Shearwater, so I live on Montecito, and I share the same concern, but when we're, when we're developing, or if the, the military housing is ever developed on the south side of Shearwater, they will have to widen Shearwater.
Who's there?
The developer, who builds the hunt pinnacle, basically. Well, yeah, they will have to widen Shearwater. So they know that, we've had a meeting on that already, but it's a private road, it's not a public street. So most of the roads in that, well, all of them, all of the roads in this area are all private roads. So we don't maintain any of those roads. It's all, it's all maintained by, like, Montecito is all maintained by their community development district and HOA, and, you know, this project would be the same. And then also, on the other side, it's all military. So we don't own any of that infrastructure. That's all owned by the privately-owned. The, with regard to, I've already just responded to some of the other ones, but one thing, all stormwater in the, in anywhere is discharged into the lagoon. So all, all cities along the lagoon discharge stormwater in the lagoon, because there's nowhere else to discharge to. So when we have floods, if you have pipes and there's outfalls, all of those outfalls, the county, there's county outfalls, City of Satellite Beach outfalls, Indian Harbor Beach, all the way up the, you know, river, Melbourne, any, any city that borders the lagoon discharges stormwater into the lagoon. The, the difference is whether it's treated or not. Most of the city's stormwater is treated. So we just did the pond over here at De Soto, that treats four hundred acres of stormwater. Because that's, the older neighborhoods are not, they don't have stormwater. So we have to build ponds to, to, to address that. We just purchased property at the end of Jackson a little while ago, spent five-hundred-and-sixty-five-thousand dollars on that property. But that, that's how much land costs every year. It's hard for us to, to do big ponds, like on mainland, you see those big ponds, it's easy for them to do that because they have space, we don't. So we just purchased property to treat that outfall. We're looking at doing the Lori Lane Plaza, we just met with that plaza owner, to put in baffle boxes for that outfall. So there's, it's, there's always discharge into the lagoon, it's whether it's treated or not. That's, that's the, that's the issue. There's never been an enchanted forest plan for this property. All of it is developed, all of it was to be developed. There's never any conservation, it's all private property. So the city, unless we purchase it, it's not, it's not slated for conservation, none of it was. It's not natural land, it's redevelopment property. We just tore, the, the property owner just tore down houses on this property. So it's not, there's no trees, there's no environmental preservation opportunities here, it's all redevelopment site. Shearwater is private, the retention ponds, so there's retention, dry retention along A-1A, so between the property and A-1A, there's dry retention there, but it's a whole master plan, so the, the whole PUD was planned together. And so there's a, a master stormwater plan. So the Montecito ponds serve this property. So they will connect their stormwater into the Montecito ponds, which Montecito people should be happy about, because we need the water. If you look at the, because all of the irrigation in this area is irrigated from the ponds, there's no wells. So that's, you know, that, that's another plus, is they don't draw from the wells, they, they actually irrigate from their stormwater ponds.
Will these guys irrigate the same way?
And will there be enough water?
Then?
I'm hoping. But if not, then they have, you know, other, they, you can still drop wells, but the idea is to use the, reuse the, the stormwater. And we haven't gotten into engineering yet, so that's the other thing. A lot of the questions that we have right now will be addressed at the preliminary master plan stage. If there's anything dug up, it's an interesting question. So if you have any development that was done in the fifties, you're probably going to build some, you're probably going to take something up when you're building. That's just the way people used to build back then. But if it's like parts, you know, it, you can find refuges under the ground, but if, it doesn't mean that it's contamination. So that's the question. If they find anything that we need, that we have concern about contamination, then of course we'll address it at that time. But if it's just, you know, parts and stuff like that, it doesn't mean that it's associated with any contamination. Golf carts and a path to the rest of the city would be a great idea. We are trying to make connections for golf carts and pedestrians everywhere. For example, we own the property on Jackson, we're trying to make a golf cart connection to the plaza, the public plaza for people, so they don't have to go down on A-1A, you can just go straight from Jackson over to the plaza. So those are the, the things that we're trying to do. Here, we would have to do it from the south side of Shearwater over, and that's not, it's, it's definitely feasible. And so we are, you know, when we talk to those property owners, that is something that we can negotiate, and we'll be happy to do that, because it is a good idea. We try to keep people off A-1A, you know, and try to make these interior connections. We can't switch, we can, so the city has a choice, the city, this is hard to explain, if the city were to switch the development plan only to single-family housing, they would be doing that with the understanding that it could lead to litigation. So that's always a concern of city councils when residents ask for downzonings like that, because it can lead to a litigation issue with the property owner, if they devalue the property. If we tear up the sewer lines, so, there's always, there's always critters in sewer lines. So if we, if we made that a concern, we would never repair sewer lines. So we have to do that. And, and you want them to dig up these sewer lines, because they're so old and non-functioning that we, we need to do these infrastructure replacements, it's, it has to happen. So that, that's something we have to do. If there's rats that come out of there, there's, there's rats that come out of there. I know they had a lot of rat problems when they demolished the property, they had to do a lot of, you know, Montecito, I remember getting calls from Montecito, they're going to take care of the rats, right? So, you know, that is always a concern, but they, they still have to do those projects. UCF doing an impact study, I got that email from Ms. Sullivan, a copy of that, and even though I disagree with some of the methods of Ms. Sullivan in, in addressing this property or this application, I think an impact study with UCF is definitely something we can do. So we have, you know, we can easily, you know, work with the developer to get UCF to do something in that, of that nature. And I think we've already been in discussions with UCF about some of the development controls we would use to make sure we mitigate the impacts of a hotel use on this property. And so doing an impact study would just kind of go a little bit beyond that, and I think that, that would be a great idea, if that's something council wants us to do. There is no DEP send an email, I got a copy of that as well. They did not send concerns, they just reiterated that a resident had concerns, and they gave us a copy of the grant agreements for our information. So that was the extent of that email. If there are renting of lawn chairs and things of that nature, that's something we'll have to discuss with the developer, but it is a, a good point, that, you know, it is our, our jurisdiction, that is a beach that we control, so that would be something they would have to negotiate with us. If they did do anything of that nature, obviously they would have to pull literally everything out of, of the beach, off the beach during turtle nesting season for, for the protection of the sea turtles. The hotel is, has a flag already, they, it's called the Preferred, and that's what the brand is called, Preferred. So they have a flag. A flag means brand. And the maintenance of the crossover would of course be the developers, not ours, if they don't know that yet. But the project maintenance will basically be the responsibility of the developer, and, you know, we would just use our normal processes of site planning, developers' agreements, and things of that nature to make sure that we keep that in check. And from what I've seen at this point, I'm not that concerned with this, this particular developer. I can, I have been doing, prior to this position, I was a planning director for ten years, I have done, and I can't tell you how many developers' agreements and site plans, and I've, I've worked with many developers that weren't like that. So I'm not that fearful of this particular developer in, in working with us to make sure that they do the right thing. That's all I got.
Okay. Couple, and again, this is stuff we can work out down the road, but I do have concern about a commercial venture using city property like Hightower to go over on the beach and rent jet skis and stuff of that nature, if they bring chairs over, everybody brings lawn chairs over and so forth. But I kind of have a problem with what that impact would be, jet skis and stuff, and how to mobilize it over property that we have a limited amount of parking and use there because of the conservation. We got it. So that's one thing that I would be very concerned about, is, yes, we have the beach there, yes, they can use it, I'm not interested in setting up, people set, vendors setting up raft rentals and that type of things on the beach and using our beach for access. That's one thing. Other thing I hear people keep saying is, you know, density, moved here. Well, when did you people, when did everybody move here? I hate, I'm not trying to be rude, but we all moved here at a certain time and made a certain impact on the area. When is okay for you or me to move here, but not okay for someone else to move here? My big concern is this property was zoned. There was a zoning on this property, as each and you have lots that were zoned. And if I take that away, my problem is the impact on our city financially. Because I can show you on smaller details in this city, that lots or houses that were destroyed by storms on the beach that we tried to tell them, you couldn't rebuild, we've never won, we've lost in court. And a project this big, they have the right, they've been paying taxes on this property. Do I like it? No, not particularly. But I can't take it away from them, it was zoned that way. And that's, to me, the biggest issue, because I don't want to put my city in harm's way for that. I lived here in nineteen fifty-seven, I was small, I can hardly remember it, but I remember running the streets. I remember when the first condo was built on, across from Harwood Avenue on the beach. People came here, they had the right. The people that developed our city were builders. They came here to build the property. I spent as much time with the man in the back there as anybody probably in this room. And, but they were developers. And I think our main thing is, is how do we use it the wise, most wise way we possibly can, that fits in our city. Environmentally, to me, is huge, and that piece of property, to me, we have a lot better chance of doing good environmental things on it, because we're starting basically from a vacant piece of property. Very much unlike, Alan, you and I have had this talk a lot, about coming into the old portion of Satellite Beach, the woods, Harwood, Glenwood, Norwood, but we don't have the land to do things. So, yes, I'm not a great fan of getting bigger, but I'm also not a, a great fan of getting our city in lawsuits, because, put yourself for a minute, a moment, and you put out these dollars, and you bought a piece of property that said you could build your house on it, and I just didn't want your house there, because I didn't like it. You bought it, you had the right to do it, you paid taxes on it. So that's my concern for the city. And my thing is, what is the least impact on us and gives us the best bang for our dollar? And I can tell you, John Fergus, I'm going to thank him again, the number of hours that man spent on this project back in the nineties, amazing amount of hours, and how these heights came about with setbacks, the original buildings were much closer to A-1A, and John figured out cone angles and so forth, that if we moved them back off A-1A, they wouldn't give us the appearance of being so tall. So, you know, it's not the perfect world, but I think we can work through a lot of this stuff. I'd like to see as environmentally, the impact of the state is fine. I really like to work out the hotel for the impact on the beach there, I think that's important, because that was an important purchase for us, that Hightower stretch.
You know, I sit here, and there are three people sitting at this dais right now that were involved in this project from the beginning. This property was either going to go to Brevard County or to Satellite Beach. Brevard County was looking at additional units per acre. So if this didn't get annexed into Satellite Beach, we wouldn't, number one, be having this conversation right now, and number two, whatever they were building up there wouldn't be what you see up there now, there'd be more. So I look at this as, our residents overwhelmingly voted seventy-some-odd percent to make sure that we annexed this property. And they had trust in us as a city to make sure that we looked out for our best interests. And, you know, I moved here in nineteen eighty-four, I moved to Florida in nineteen seventy-six, and I've lived in three different places in Florida. And this is probably by far the smallest little place I've lived in. So it was, it would be nice if we could keep it just like it was in nineteen seventy-six when I moved here to Florida, because in Neptune Beach where I lived, it was a great place. Well, Jacksonville blew up, then I moved to Fort Lauderdale, Fort Lauderdale blew up, and now I'm here. And I see nothing growth-wise here like I saw in the other two places. So what we're looking at here is definitely smart growth, we're doing our homework, we're doing things right, we're looking out for the environment. I definitely don't want to see jet skis on the beach. I'm not even sure I want to see a lawn chair-type service on the beach down there. But that's something that we can look at as we go down and start doing the fine stuff in this project. This is the conceptual plan we're looking at. It's less intensity, less density than the condos that we're going to be. less intensity, less density than the condos that were going to be there and the four-story units that were going to be behind them. There were 10 four-story units, and there were the condos that were adjacent to A1A. There was a lot more intensity, a lot more density, a lot more traffic. I see a lot of these units, and even some of these homes, as being units that people are going to be in three to four months a year, and then they're going to be gone, just like the condos that are across the street from Publix now. Many of those are going to be winter residents. They're going to be here, and they're not going to be here the rest of the year. For those of us that live here all year long, we're not going to see them on A1A. We're not going to see them on Shorewater Parkway. So, we've met the concurrency requirements that we have for water, we have for sewer, we have for schools. Everything that we needed to do, we've done. And I, for one, think that this is something that I can support. I'm like Frank. I mean, you know, I wish we could go back and do things differently. If we could, number one, I wouldn't be building on slabs here. They'd be up like they build in the Carolinas, because those are the buildings, if you look at Mexico Beach when Michael came through there, those are the buildings that are still standing. The buildings that are on slabs, the roofs are gone, and the walls are gone. So, if I had my druthers and we could redo this, we'd redo it a different way. But this is what we have to work with today. So, I'm in favor of this project, and I'm going to vote for this concept. And the 224 doesn't bother me, because I look at the breezeways on this property, and that 50 feet of the 224 is only between two buildings where it's narrow. The rest of it is pretty open. So, I don't have a problem with the 224.
Thank you.
I'm about five years to this area behind Frank. I've lived here all my life, except for going to Miami Forest School and that sort of thing. Got involved with council, because one of the criteria that everybody had asked me to run is how conservative would I be? And I remember, the first question I got asked was, "What's my platform?" And I couldn't answer that. I didn't have a platform. My idea was just to preserve the city as best as I could, to work with people to preserve the city as best as I could. Have been on a number of councils with Frank and with Dominic, and each and every one of those councils was to try to keep this city exactly as it is, as close as we possibly could. I remember to this day when we started buying beachfront property, and we bought up 40% of this beach, which is absolutely unheard of back in the day. It got to the point where, and actually, I think David Schechter was mayor at the point, at that point, we were running out of money, and we, John had gotten us, I think, what, $20 million worth of grants. We bought up everything that we could buy. And the properties right across the street from McDonald's was the last one that we had money to try to go for, as I think. And I remember David saying, "The most we've got is 500, and they won't go below 925." So, that's as far as we could go with buying up property. This has always been a conservative effort. The people that, at least three of, all five of us actually, but at least three of us here have been working on trying to maintain this city for as long as we possibly can. And that has been our goal. I hear from the builder that he grew up here, and that's his goal too, is to try to put a project together that everybody can be proud of, because he's clearly been a part of this community. So, I do support this, and I know that I have done everything I can to keep this town the way it is. And I don't know of another town in the state of Florida that's got 40% of their beachfront property set aside. So, I think we've done a pretty good job at this. But as Frank has said, and as Dominic has said, our options are pretty limited. We don't really want this, but this is a pretty neat little project, considering what it could do for our community and our tax base overall. So, I do support this, and I think that it fits in the same plan with what I've been at for, I don't know how many years, doing this. It allows us to keep the nature of this community the way it is. We've come across a builder that will allow us to do that same concept, and I think it's very much a win-win. And that's all I have. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
I have a couple of questions and a couple of comments. When the military sold this, you were not the first owners, right? There was an owner prior to
That's correct.
this one. So, the talk about the million-dollar homes, I believe that was a concept that that owner had. I remember reading that article in Florida Today, like other people have stated, and maybe it was just a wish, you know, I don't even think it got as far as you all.
We've never seen any plans.
But I mean, it was like, that was something that people read in Florida Today and had in their mind.
That's the problem sometimes with, you know, we don't get the plans, so we don't know, you know, and some of the stuff that's been in the news and through social media, that's been either speculation or
Wish.
wish lists or something of that nature, you know?
So, it was never planned to be all complete, single-family homes, and then turned to this. So, that was just one thing I wanted to make clear. I'm going to go back to the 200-foot, but if we were to approve it, as it's stated, we don't have a cap, like, they're going to go to 224, and we take away the 200, could they go to 250?
They would have to come back for a concept plan change with you for that approval? So, they would have to get it approved by you if they wanted to change that?
Past 224. Right now, it's at 224?
Like, the plan that they, that's in front of you, if you approve that resolution, that is literally what they're restricted to.
And that doesn't leave that open to further width?
If anything, if engineering came up, it would probably be a decrease. Sometimes they have run into issues in engineering, and that usually works worse on their end. But this is a pretty engineered concept plan.
All right. So, sorry, my microphone broke. Part of the little foam right here is not there anymore. Okay, this has been a tough one. So, I've lived here not as long as these guys, but I moved here when I was 13, and one of the first jobs I had was at Ramada. And that was across the street from, I went to Satellite High School. I went to Hoover. And I've been trying to rack my brain about this, because I've had some conversations with a few people that would prefer to see a fourth condo as opposed to a hotel. And it's been something I've been sort of on the fence, because I know it's kind of the condo or the hotel. Ramada was on RCs, which is a pretty big break around here. I mean, all the good surfers know it's there. So, you know, it's a pretty, pretty well-attended beach. And I don't recall, maybe someone can fill me in, I don't recall that beach ever being packed full, ever. And we had about 170 rooms, 125 rooms there. I'm not sure. It was a
It was 108, I think.
108. There was a conference center there. It was right across the street from Publix. I don't remember the traffic being very bad. My graduating class was around 3-something. But we had 999 homes sitting at base housing at that time as well, full of families. And I can honestly say the traffic, I was driving, trust me. I have road rage. I would have had a problem with traffic. Okay. The police around here, no. I have a hard time. They're keeping me in check most of the time.
You usually try to drive.
Courtney, just close your eyes. So, I've rolled this around in my head. I personally love the idea of a hotel. I just had a family reunion here. My family is from the Midwest, and I had 40 farmers to send upon Brevard County, and I had to put them up at the Crown Plaza. And the intention of that family reunion was that we were going to have dinners at my house. So, we had to drive three miles, four miles every day, which, to some people, doesn't seem like a big deal, but beachside standards, four miles may as well be 50. So, for me, having had the Ramada here, having been in weddings there, having had my friends get married there, worked there, witnessed rats all over the dunes, by the way, which is pretty scary and gross, I'm for the hotel. So, I decided that I would go around and start talking to the public. I, my children attend this elementary school here locally, and I, and I tend restaurants, and I've been polling people, and some people accused me of not wanting to do that, or I was asking questions, and they thought I was fishing for some sort of information, which is exactly what I was doing. And I have to be honest, the overwhelming support, other than tonight, and tonight, we're at a tie, by the way, for residents. I had three maybes. I couldn't figure out what Dale wanted for sure that were for the hotel and for this, this plan. And I think it's good for our community. It's good to make our roads have sidewalks and make it grow up and not have condemned homes that are infested with rats. And I don't think it's going to change the nature of the community. Montecito didn't do it. Montecito, I mean, there's a lot of homes that came in from there. So, I'm, it's been a really tough battle, but I will say this, and this was brought up to the builders too by Courtney, is that the beaches are very important to me. And I requested that we provide information to each of the hotel guests as they come in, and I would almost even want to go as far to find them if they do not follow through with any of the regulations on the turtles. I mean, strictly littering, to me, littering is a no-go. If you're messing with turtle nests, definitely no-go. Like, you can bring them to my house. We'll take them to the Everglades. It's, this is, I mean, it's funny. It's a joke, but I mean, this is, this is serious stuff, and we take it seriously as well. But we can't stop progress. We can't stop 85-foot buildings, and it's going to happen, and we got to try to control it the best that we can. So, I, I am, I am pretty much a yes. Even with the width of the buildings, I know KIG is going to be upset. I'm, I think I'm a yes for right now.
Yes, thank you.
Sorry, that was a ramble.
First, to everybody, so thank you for giving those, your input. You did it in a professional way. We appreciate it very much. I think it's important to have a good exchange. We understand that we're always not going to agree on everything, but I appreciate the professionalism you used up here.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 1024.
I have a motion by
This is the amended one right here.
I have a motion by Councilman Montanaro.
I'll second.
I have a second by Vice Mayor Reimer.
With question, is it, does that, does any of that 200, 224, whatever, have to be included in this as an adjustment to this?
It's just the concept.
Just the concept, okay.
And it's in the ordinance along there.
And this is going to come back many times.
The ordinance will come back to you at the next two meetings, if you approve it, and then their engineering will come back to you as soon as they get that submitted.
And to everybody, they have to meet all the codes, all the setback. This has nothing to do with any of that. So, they have to meet everything. They talked about the storm water, everything. So, this is just to show you, this is the concept. They'll come back with the rest. We'll vote on that. So.
I'm trying with my second.
Yeah, okay. Everybody good?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gibson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Ruzicki?
I'm going to say no, because of the things not added to that resolution.
The 200?
Correct.
Okay.
Vice Mayor Reimer?
Yes.
Councilman Montanaro?
Yes.
And Mayor Kean?
Yes. Motion passes four to one. Thank you, staff. I know it's been long. Thank you, everyone. Counsel?
Before everybody like runs out of here, I just wanted to give them another benchmark real quick. If you took the hotel out of this acreage, the units per acre is 9.95. The county just approved it adding more units to the Shoreview development, and that made it 22 units per acre. So, just to give you an idea of the difference between the unit per acre of this development compared to what was just approved in the county.
Thank you. Counsel, we've been at this for a couple hours. Let's take a five-minute break. We'll have a recess.
I'm going to give you your jacket back for now.
Everybody ready?
Yes.
I'd like to reconvene. City Council meeting for November 6th. We're on Agenda Item 10, which is a public hearing. So, reopen it, a public hearing, and this is discuss, take action on Ordinance 1178. Jim?
Ordinance number 1178, and ordinance of the City of Satellite Beach, Brevard County, Florida, vacating and abandoning the west 33.75 feet of the north 7.5-foot public utility easement running parallel to the north property line of Lot 11, Block 2, Emerald Lyles, Phase 2, as recorded in Plat Book 25, page 115, Public Records of Brevard County, Florida, 692 North Hedgecock Square, as described herein, providing for severability conflicts recording on an effective date. It's the first reading of Ordinance number 1178.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve Ordinance number 1178 on first reading.
I have a motion by Councilman
Second.
Montanaro, second by Councilwoman Gibson.
This is, this is an easement that we've run into, and it's been done over years and years, because pool decks were built, and pools were built in easements, and that's what this is.
We do these every so often on that, just
This is correct, no mistake.
Yep.
I mean, literally.
So, further discussion from council, okay? At this time, open up for public comment on Agenda Item 10. Hear no public comment. Bring it back to council. Glenn?
Councilwoman Ruzicki?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Reimer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gibson?
Yes.
Councilman Montanaro?
Yes.
Mayor Kean?
Yes. Motion passes. Close the public hearing portion and move on to Agenda Item 11, which is discuss, take action, adopting Resolution 1022.
Resolution number 1022, a resolution of the City of Satellite Beach, Brevard County, Florida, amending Resolution number 987, establishing policies, procedures, and fee schedules regarding the use of city facilities to include new section governing permit fees, security deposits for, and security deposits for beach bonfires, providing an effective date.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 1022.
To on first reading.
Second.
A motion by Councilman Montanaro, second by Councilwoman Gibson. Discussion from council.
I have a question for Cassie. How's the response done? Lots of permits?
When we closed today, we had 64, starting last Monday.
It hasn't slowed down permits.
Right. Okay. And no, no big concerns?
No real pushback.
Okay. We've kept one deposit so far.
We kept one deposit last weekend.
Oh, already?
Yeah, cleaned up their area.
Good.
Great. So, we're having, I mean, it's working out good from the standpoint of us patrolling it and making sure things are going good, and our fee, make sure we cover that, and we get it. Good.
Does it bog down you ladies at the rec. department?
It's been very busy.
And you were trying to do Founder's Day at the same time as well, but
Right, yeah.
It's amazing how much they do with the people.
Who does the checking of these sites to make sure people don't take a live hot fire and just shove all the sand of it?
Fire department.
They go check it in the evening. They're part of their run of, great, okay.
Real quick, the person that lost their deposit, will we be renting to them again? Do we have like a strikeout policy where they're not allowed to rent, or not rent, have the bonfire? I think that's something we should consider, to be honest. If we have repeat offenders?
Depending on, right, the offense, then what was left was just charred pieces of wood, and we did call and let them know why we were keeping their deposit, left them a message, asked them to call me back if they had any questions. They didn't return my call. I think at this point, it's more education, so I wouldn't say to ban them at this point.
Okay.
I'd wait to see, don't create a problem. I'd like to see if, how it comes along, and then maybe see what to do. Okay. Everybody good? Open up for public, open up this public comment on Agenda Item 11.
Diane Douglas, they can just rent it, have a friend do it. You know what I mean? It doesn't, it'd still be the same people. The other thing is, I forgot. So, that was with the $100 and the $50, right? The $100. Yeah, so just checking. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Further question from council? Any, any more public comment? Close that portion. Any more comment from council?
Let me also say, of those 64, I did count 16 of those were residents. So,
Wow.
most of them are non-residents.
Interesting.
It is interesting.
So, if you have to send somebody up to pick out the charred wood, that's like two people, $40, so we keep 60 bucks. I mean, if we're keeping their $100 deposit, we're not losing money to go out and pick up a few pieces of wood. So, I wouldn't ban them for leaving a few pieces of wood.
We just have to worry about the wood, because sometimes it's hot.
It's so hot, yeah.
And that's the point, is making them clean up the whole thing, because some people don't realize that they can't just throw sand on it. And we try, but, you know, we get it, get to them, you know, to clean up all of it, and that ensures that we won't have that problem again.
I'm good.
Great. Everybody good?
Yep.
Councilwoman
Councilwoman Rosicky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Breimer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gibson?
Yes.
Councilman Montanaro?
Yes.
Mayor Keating?
Yes. Thank you. Okay. 12 we did. Move on to 13. Discuss, take action on Ordinance 1180.
Ordinance number 1180, an ordinance of the City of Satellite Beach, Brevard County, Florida, amending appropriation of funds for fiscal year 2018-2019 budget, Ordinance number 1165. Set ordinance as previously amended by Ordinance number 1171, providing an effective date.
Would like to make a motion to approve Ordinance number 1180 on the first reading.
A motion by Councilwoman Gibson. I have a second.
Second.
Second by Vice Mayor Breimer.
If you want to do your presentation.
If you guys don't have any questions, I don't have a problem.
Let me ask that first before I put you through it. Any questions for her on the presentation?
No.
And what we do, we've done this quite a bit. Okay. At this time, open up Agenda Item 13 for public comment.
Diane, you got to sit in the front.
Well, that's why I try to scurry. Diane, so, this is just a question I have, and I don't know if it even goes, but I'm going to go for it. Because we got our property taxes, and it said in there on the bottom there, we had the stormwater, $200. Is that new to this year, or was that before? Or I just didn't check my last year's and?
That was last year.
That was last year. Okay, too. All right, thanks.
Thank you. Any further? Okay, bring it back to counsel. Questions?
I just want to say, we don't have any questions because you've done such a great job of always going over this, so, thank you.
Good. Sorry you have to stay so late.
To not even speak.
Councilman Montanaro?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rosicky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Breimer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gibson?
Yes.
Mayor Keating?
Yes. The next is the May, excuse me. Sorry. I've been, been here that long, I'm sorry. November 20th.
Hey. I'll slip you quiet.
All right.